Wow, that was good. I didn't even have to hit the hammer. So, at this time... I am calling to order our school board meeting. It's November 19th, 2019, 6 o'clock PM. All board members are present, and at this time, I have two young ladies here, Devon, Paul, and Dylan, who are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ladies, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and both those ladies are from Aquarian. Thank you, ladies. Great, great job. And our student representative here is Sophie. If you'd like to read your... Oh, okay. I'll read mine first. So, it's always with great pleasure that I recognize that we are residing on traditional Dunina land, and we're very thankful for that. But we also want to welcome you to our meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students for success in life. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Sophia and have her read her statement.
On behalf of the school board, we would like to thank students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the Anchorage School District YouTube channel to watch the live stream. Recordings of meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs. My name is Sophia Maria Holder, and I am the student representative to this board. I was elected to serve through the ASD Student Advisory Board. Although my votes are advisory only, I offer a student voice to this body.
Thank you. And at this time, approval of agenda. Is there any dissension with the agenda? I would actually like to remove something, remove Bill of Rights Initiative for discussion later. Do I have a...
One second.
Okay. And for...is there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, then the agenda is approved with the amendment of removing the Bill of Rights discussion. Okay, my favorite part of the evening is what makes ASD great!
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deana Bishop. I'm the superintendent of ASD, and our board president, Star Marsette, and I are here to celebrate our students. And this part of the meeting, if you haven't been to it before, is called...what is it called?
It's called focusing on staff and students.
And we like to call it what makes ASD great. And we do this because it was a concerted effort by the board to specifically look at what is it that makes ASD great. And of course, the board said it was our students, it was our parents, it was our community. Collectively, the work of everyone makes ASD great. So, time was taken aside from the meetings to be able to recognize young people and older people alike. So, today, we'll talk about some young teachers. We have recognized these teachers as finalists in 2017 as well as 2018. They have now been officially named as official awardees, Jennifer and Joshua in 2017, and Dawn in 2018. So, that was actually note to myself. But we are pleased to announce that three ASD teachers have been recognized as Presidential awardees by the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. And they will represent the entire state of Alaska in math and science. This award is the highest recognition from kindergarten through 12th grade, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and/or computer science, the highest award that a teacher may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. Only 108 teachers are recognized each year. The award recognizes those teachers who have both deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach, as well as the ability to mobilize and enable students to be successful in those areas. And we have our principals here as well, so we're going to talk to them all together, both elementary and secondary. So, please come forward, Jennifer Childress, Joshua Hall, and Dawn Wilcox. Woo! There they are. Fabulous. So, now, I'll share a little bit about them. So, Jennifer, actually, and Jennifer is...her principal is here, Tina Johnson-Harris, please come forward as well. And I was going to say, they're dressed in diamond colors, so I should know. Jennifer Childress has taught for over 20 years. She has spent the last 16 years teaching science and engineering courses at Diamond High School. She's passionate about helping students connect the concepts learned in a physics classroom with their life experiences. She incorporates many everyday applications of physics concepts in her teaching and encourages her students to contribute observations of physics they see happening in the world. Jennifer helped found the Engineering Academy at Diamond High. She is one of two teachers that developed and ran the program called Smart Girls Rock. The program exposes freshman and sophomore girls to female engineers in our city. And Jennifer, we'd like you to share, as well as Tina, please share what you'd like with this crowd.
Okay, I didn't know I was going to get the mic. This award is a great honor, and I guess I would just say that I am very proud to represent Diamond. I was proud to represent Diamond in Washington DC. And over the course of my many years of teaching, I've worked with so many great teachers, and I've learned so much from them. And so, this is just...I'm very proud to receive this award.
Well, I have the pleasure of being Jennifer's principal for the last six years, and I must say that the testimony of students is what really lets you know the heart and the commitment and dedication of a teacher. And the reason why I say that is because every year, we have engineering advisory and have students come back. And they always say, yes, Ms. Childress did a great job teaching me physics, as well as Mr. Hall in calculus. And so, the pair have done a beautiful job. We don't always know the impact that teachers make with students. And so, kudos to you guys. I hope that those students continue to come back and tell us their stories.
Excellent. And I do want to say that I had some notes already in my program, just to say that they were finalists almost up to a couple years ago. And the process to actually be named as the one of the 108 is a rigorous process. And so, just wanted to share that, and that congratulations again. But now, let's talk about Joshua. Mr. Hall has been an educator for more than 20 years as well, and he's been teaching mathematics for 16 as well. So, he started the same year there. Making connections between mathematics and science education is something that challenges and excites Joshua as a teacher. He believes that there is enormous potential to engage and entice students to appreciate mathematics as an excited by the opportunities that he has each day in his classroom to empower students to be successful in life. Joshua has done significant curriculum work in developing modern instructional practices for practical application of mathematics skills every day. Here you go, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. I appreciate the recognition. I would echo what Jennifer said. It is such an honor to win an award like this. It was a fantastic experience to be able to go to Washington DC and meet with our counterparts from across the country, and hear ideas, and share experiences. Meeting with those teachers reminds me that there are so many other great teachers that we work with here in ASD. And in some way, I hope that we have, with some pride and some elegance, represented all of those teachers. So, thank you, everyone.
And lastly, I just want to publicly say, we can't say thank you enough to both Jennifer and Josh. They are very dedicated staff members of the community and Diamond community. So, thank you so much.
Go Lynx, but stay up here. And she snuck up, but the principal, Michelle Johansson, is now up when we focus on elementary. So, let me reintroduce to you to Dawn Wilcox from Campbell STEM Elementary, which is a K-6 school. And she was awarded the science award in 2018. She's been a second grade teacher at Campbell STEM Elementary for four years, where she teaches all subjects. In her 20-year career, Dawn has taught in the highly gifted program Title I, and is a science instructional specialist in the STEM Department for ASD. Her passion is engaging students in hands-on, project-based learning. Working with her colleagues, Dawn was able to fulfill her dream of creating a school promoting science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Campbell STEM is now the first STEM elementary school in Anchorage, and it is a beaut. So, it's a wonderful school. Would you two like to also comment?
Well, as already been stated, we have so many people that have mentored us along the way that have really made us the teachers we are today, and so thankful for that, and thankful for this opportunity to be able to go to Washington, but also represent our district, which we have so many excellent teachers throughout. So, we're just three of thousands, right? And very thankful to receive this award. So, thank you.
Okay, well, to me, it's not enough to say that Dawn's one of the finest teachers that I've ever had the privilege of being with. I've known Dawn for 40 years and taught with her back at Rogers Park. And she was happy to come over to our school to help it to become a STEM school. But I will say, what she's going to be known for long, long after she's gone, is the fact that she was able to tap into that awe and that wonder for kids, and realize that the way that children really learn is from the emotions that they feel when they, you know, handle chickens. I'll just say that. And, you know, just all those project-based learnings. She took primary kids to Cordova one year. She adopted a park near the school and had her little kids go before the school board, or not the school board, but the city, all the city, to argue that and get it. So, she's an amazing educator, and we are all so proud to have her all these years.
Did you say they also got a grant?
Yes, and they also got...the kids got a $20,000 grant to do the park. So, she's awesome.
All right. Well, thank you. We just want to say once again to these awesome instructors, awesome representatives of Alaska, thank you for representing us, ASD in the nation. We owe you a great deal of gratitude. I mean, we take a picture with you, right over there. Next up is tennis. All right, and now, ladies and gentlemen, it's on to tennis. And if the principals are in the room, I do see them, please come forward, Principal Mr. Gustafson and Principal Allman, respectively, from West Anchorage High School and South Anchorage High School. All right, let's...we could give these gentlemen a hand. And with that, with the tennis teams of West Anchorage High School and South Anchorage High School, please come forward. All right, come on up. Actually, let's move them all over here, so...and our coaches. Thank you, thank you. All right, how are you?
I'm good.
My neighbor. Yeah, there you go. Congrats. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let me speak about these young people. West and South High Schools did something very different this year, and it's quite historic. They actually tied as co-state champions in tennis. Congratulations, yeah. So, just a little history. West and South, their two teams have competed over time for the state championship. And only these two teams since 2007 have taken first place. But it's gone back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So, in many ways, it is appropriate that they share the title this year. West has now won, I don't know if we should rub this in, eight times, and South has won six times in the last few years. But South has many more years. There are newer schools, so they'll keep going. Gabriel Porter, an exchange student from Brazil...where's Gabriel? Not here. Was a standout singles player this year for South, playing two spectacular matches at the state tournament to defeat both number one and number two seeds from West to win the state singles title. West finished both last year and this year undefeated in regular season matches, and they were the winner of the Region Four tournament this year, and first at state. South was the runner-up just to West at the conference and regional tournament, but advanced 10 players to the state, which was the most from any Cook England Conference team, and placed first at state. This is kind of like a puzzle and a riddle, isn't it? So, in 2018, the West head coach was voted Coach of the Year, and the South head coach was voted Coach of the Year in '19. Both schools have a no-cut policy, and they focus on teaching a sport that can be played for a lifetime. Congratulations to both South and West on your championship wins and historic tie for first place. You make ASD great. And you had a little hint, and a little bit, but what we do here is we do pass the mic. And if you're a student, and if you could share something about your school you like or tennis you like, share your grade level, and maybe whatever else you want. You can thank anyone. And then, if you're an adult, we also want you to share. You don't have to share your age, or grade, or anything like that, but just share a little bit about your pride in either being South High Wolverine or West High Eagle. So, are you good with going first? All right, here you go. Name, grade, and anything you want to say. You can thank your friends, your parents, whatever you'd like.
I just want to thank my coach for my great year in this season. So, thank you, and yeah, I'll see you next year.
Alex.
Alex, all right, Alex.
Oh, okay.
I go to West.
My name's Curtis Nelson. I'm the South coach. We have a few South kids here. I'm really happy that we had such a good year. And the kids were great all around. Anchorage School District has just a wonderful tennis program, and the sportsmanship was great. It was really...this is my first year coaching, and I had a wonderful time. And it was mostly because of the kids and the other team and the coaches, and just how excellent it was. So, anyways, thank you.
I'm Antonia. I go to West. Just like to thank Coach Bill for a good season, and I hope for many more to come.
I'm Ally. I'm a senior at West, and I didn't even really play tennis four years ago, but now it's a sport I want to play for the rest of my life. So, thanks to Bill.
I'm a senior also. I did everything that I could at state to make sure Curtis and his team weren't here tonight, but I'm kind of glad they are. Actually, the player of all the players on these two teams that I've coached the longest time was the South mixed doubles boys' player, Steve Kilkeny. So, congratulations to him, even though he's not here.
I'm Lachlan from South, and I just want to thank my coach for a great season.
My name's Jack. I'm from South. I'd just like to thank my coach for an amazing season. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Luke Allman, South principal. I just want to thank Curtis. Like you said, he's a first-year coach and did great things right off the bat, so we're looking forward to a bright future. I also can't help mentioning, this is one of five state championships this year at South High School. And I do want to say, though, that, you know, those championships are the product, they're what we celebrate here. But I really always say, trust the process, and the important part is the hard work that kids and adults are doing every day outside of school hours while still getting it done in the classroom that makes this even more impressive than just standing up here and taking a picture. So, just want to recognize their efforts and the work over time that they do.
I'm Sven Gustafson. I'm the principal at West, and I want to echo everything that Luke said, except for his five state championships. I'm just...I'm very proud of these kids and the tennis. And one thing I learned, I grew up in Dillingham, we didn't have tennis out there. So, I've learned a lot. And when I was there at the state tournament, I didn't...I hadn't ever realized that they ref themselves. And all the times you go out to different sporting events, and there's refs, and there's families, and you know all of the politics of all that. At tennis, these kids ref themselves, and they are very cordial with one another. It doesn't matter where they're from, or what school they're from, when they're out there. Everybody's celebrating everybody, and I think that's pretty cool in this tennis community. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to get a picture with our tennis champs. But want to say thank you to our community, our students, everyone. Thank you for making ASD. You've got to do it with me like Tony the Tiger. Great! And ladies and gentlemen, actually, we had a surprise. We didn't put this in the lineup today because it's actually about our own board. It is my pleasure to announce the State School Board of the Year, the Outstanding School Board of the Year for 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, the Anchorage School Board! Woo-hoo! So, we have President Marsette, Member Mitchell, Member Holloman. In between, Member Mitchell and Holloman is our Vice President, Member Hildy. We have Member Vicalis, Member Donley, and Member Bellamy. And what's your last name?
Holder.
Holder, Member Holder. I should have read it, yeah. We always call everybody our first name. Sorry about that. Everybody. So, ladies and gentlemen, this board was nominated by their peers for their work last year and continued into this year for their response to the emergency that happened on November 30th, their communication and then sharing of information. And I just want to say, it's a pleasure for me to work with the Anchorage School Board. And we are going to pass the mic. So, they can just share the best thing perhaps about working for our community and our children.
Hi, my name is Sophia Maria Holder, and I was just recently elected to this position by the Student Advisory Board. So, I wasn't involved during by the Student Advisory Board, so I wasn't involved during the earthquake, but I definitely felt its effects, and I know that the school board has been working very hard, both in my school and in every school across the ASD, to fix it, fix what happened, so it's really nice.
Gee, Sophia, you just set the bar pretty high. So I wasn't on the board at that time either, but I was a part of the community, and I was really pleased with how things went at my grandkid's school. So, and then everybody I've spoken to have felt the same way. And the other thing that's so impressive for me, even though I wasn't a part of it, is that another district, I think it was the North Star Borough School District, Northwest Arctic School District, actually recommended the Anchorage School District. So that really made it really special. So when they called our name that Saturday night, I jumped up, and I posed, it was awesome. Thank you.
Hi, I was just so proud of our staff and our team, I think they stepped up and did amazing work responding to the earthquake. It's just one of those once-in-50-year events, no more, I hope. But, we were very lucky compared to '64, and I was there in '64, and some of our schools collapsed. And in the time since then, the investment the public has made in making our schools more secure, safe, and earthquake-proof really paid off in this incident. And I'm just so proud of the staff, the wonderful, wonderful job they did, they really have, the credit goes to them for the amazing response they did to this earthquake. Thank you.
It has been an absolute honor to work with everybody on this school board and, you know, previous boards and the administration, but I think probably for me, as a mom of three kids in the school district, the response, especially at my community in Eagle River, has been tremendous, and it's very heartfelt, and so it's an honor to get the award, but it's much more meaningful for what we've done here at home.
I came to feel like I truly have arrived at a high level when I've received an award, when I had absolutely no work involved in making it happen at all. This truly is about our staff, it's about years of planning, preparation, and in the moment where it happened, it was staff and kids that got everybody out of buildings safely, that got everybody back home where they were supposed to be. I stayed home through the whole thing, and, you know, everything went marvelously well, and yet somehow my name's on the plaque, and that's not really fair. But I want to echo what Member Donley said, this is really about what our employees and students did on what could have been a very difficult day.
And I'll just echo what they said, I didn't do anything to help in the earthquake, but as a mom, I was so thankful for the excellent training and diligence of our teachers and caring for my children while they were, they were with them, and they protected them so beautifully and met all of their needs, and I got a text within a second from a teacher as soon as the shaking stopped, so I couldn't ask for more. We have wonderful teachers and staff in this community, and I'm just beyond thankful to get to learn from them and support them in the great work they do. Well, ditto quintuple for me, I guess. So I definitely, the drills that we do every month, the drills that we do every quarter make a huge difference. Many of you probably saw the video where the kids were under their tables in about two seconds, and everybody knew what they needed to do, and the staff worked around the clock for a week, the community pitched in, the churches that created free childcare, the people who went to help out at schools, I mean, it really was an amazing effort. And I also want to echo what Mr. Donley said about thanking the community for supporting our bonds, for when we make, do roof replacements, and at the same time we upgrade for seismic improvements, when we go in and we, every time we go in and we make improvements to a school or do, you know, needed long-term major maintenance to the schools, we are looking to make them safer for our students, so thank you for supporting that.
So I said this at the awards ceremony, and I'll say it here, we as a board, you know, we're figureheads up here, we do some voting and pass things and that sort of thing, but this award is for the community, it's not just for ASD, and it's for everyone, from our bus drivers to our nutrition, to our administrative. I will tell you, I didn't stay home, I came down to headquarters because I was like, oh my God, I need to, you know, just because that's who I am. And they were so, you know, they, my God, they were just on it, and I just stood over in a corner and watched in awe because they were amazing. And the fact that we had no fatalities or serious injuries, and I went in those buildings, and it just amazed me, amazed me, and, you know, just think, I'm going to say it, up above, but this is about everybody, this is about the churches, this is about Boys and Girls Club, this is about parents that were, came to pick up their kids, and when they couldn't make phone calls, and they couldn't get to the schools, that they knew their kids were safe because we had the staff and the teachers and everyone to do it. So, this is for everybody, thank you.
And now that we all know how to do it and we practiced, let's let the board know what they do, the Tony the Tiger way. ASD School Board, you make ASD great! And now, ladies and gentlemen, on to the business of the evening.
Okay, at this time, we'll be looking at reports, and there is no military report tonight, but we, do we have a student advisory report, Sophia?
Yes, so our last meeting was last Tuesday, and so, a lot of the meeting was focused on making sure that we're following Robert's rules, and that everyone knows and understands Robert's rules, so that way we're organizing the meetings in a way that gives everyone a voice in that sense. We also talked a bit about what we want to see in the upcoming goals for the school board, and that we should discuss it with our schools, and so we're going to bring that back for discussion next meeting.
Great, excited to hear about that, I can't wait to hear. Finance.
The finance committee met today, we had three topics, we got an update on our CAFR, which we will go through on December 3rd, we got an oasis count update, so student count and impact on budget for this current year, and we had a budget discussion, we're on a survey that is going out. Our next meeting is, we're going to have two in February, or December, and it's going to be December 3rd from 2:30 to 3:30.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The communications committee met on November 12th, and we had two items on the agenda. The first item was to finalize our planning for the legislative luncheon, which will be December 13th down at the LIO office, and then our second agenda item had to do with beginning discussions around our legislative priorities for 2020. And we will continue that discussion at our next meeting, which is next week, 11, November 26th, 3 to 5 p.m. in the board conference room.
Okay, thank you. And governance, Mr. Holloman.
Yes, our meeting, we reviewed some of the language we've got on participation by teleconference. The administration brought changes in board policy that update our tobacco and alcohol policies to include vaping and e-cigarettes. You'll see that as a non-action item tonight, to come back at the next meeting for action. And went over several things that were referred to us, and crowdfunding policy, organizational chart, and different items that will ultimately make their way to us for, to change board policy in a couple of instances. I do want to remind everyone, we're in the phase of where we are reviewing some board policy every meeting. We went through, for 10 or 12 years, changing board policy, was that how long it took? I'm kidding, but we are now, at each meeting, reviewing a section just to look for things that have gone out of date, or things that might need some looking at again, and I would urge board members to just be aware of that, maybe look at that, and if you see language that you think needs to be updated, to let us know so we can put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. And then on our strategic planning steering committee, we haven't met, but we have had the opportunity to go out to the community and have three sessions at our, let me see, it was Golden View, Baggage, and Mira Lake, and...
And Meers.
And Meers, well, we haven't done Meers yet.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing Meers Thursday, so you have an opportunity to go to Meers Thursday, November 21st, from 6:00 to 7:30. The feedback we're getting from the community is they really feel like this is beneficial, that it's an opportunity for them to actually share their thoughts with us, and not be, I mean, we ask questions, but we want to hear what the community has to say and their guidance towards our strategic planning. So, I encourage, if you haven't taken the survey online, please do so, even if you are in a organization or group, it's not too late to contact us, we'll come out to your organization and do the same presentation and gather input from your members. So, please, if you would like to do that, please contact Katie, and her information is on her website for the steering committee, Strategic Planning Committee. Sure.
I'd just like to add and remind the board to get their three to five legislative priorities into myself, Katie, and the president, please.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, any other committee reports? Anybody have anything else to report on as far as committees, or? Nope, okay, great. So at this time, this is where we take testimony on non-action or non-agenda items, and, have you got it there? Okay. So, the board welcomes public comment on non-agenda and non-action items, we value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting, testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting, or can be submitted in writing. We have a table front and center with microphones available for testimony when I call your name, you will have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the timer appears on the screen, front and center now, so you don't have to look to the left, so that's pretty cool. When it, you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow, and when the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all who would like to speak, the board asks that no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with an opposing opinion. Additionally, it's not our practice that the board members answer questions or engage in the discussion with the members of the public, this is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, unless issues raised in testimony, will be referred to the administration for follow-up. And my first individual is Jessica Vetch? Jessica, thank you, and Mike Bronson, if you'd come up on the second mic, please. And Jessica, whenever you see the clock down here, you can begin.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Vetch, and I'm here tonight to talk about my daughter's experience this year in Trailside Elementary School's new blended preschool pilot program. Are you sitting down? Because we love it, and I just wanted to communicate to you a little bit of my relief and delight in discovering what the blended program is and how it works. As a mother of four, I've been around the conversation about early childhood education long enough to have heard words and phrases like inclusivity in integrated SEL, multisensory instruction, get thrown around like so much beautiful idealistic confetti, and then watch as it frequently gets swept under the rug of data-driven benchmarks and standards-based instruction. That was a metaphor, reading lit standard 5.4. And this happens so often, I've started to think that maybe educational best practice just isn't compatible with educational policy on the public level. However, this year in the blended program, I've started to think maybe otherwise. In the blended model, I've seen holistic and flexible instructional methods in a sensory-appropriate environment that sets patterns of joy, productivity, and cooperation in the classroom, rather than carrot and sticking our little guys into external compliance. They're learning great patterns for future classroom behavior. I've seen targeted interventions that affirm their sense of self-worth and belonging, rather than simply pointing out their deficits to themselves and to their classmates. I've seen children given time and materials to explore their world and develop those qualities of inquiry and discovery that are so essential to their later learning. They also have opportunity and space to engage in child-initiated, group-managed activities to naturally develop their skills of civic cooperation and personal responsibility that we work so hard to teach them. Most importantly, I've seen kids arrive at school from different backgrounds and very different abilities, to a playing field that's as level as possible, in an attempt to give everyone an equal foundation for their future education. What I'm seeing my daughter come home with, I think, is a very solid foundation for her future education. So I'm here tonight to thank you so much for the opportunity to provide this for my daughter, and also to ask you to seriously consider the long-term benefits of this program for more of our younger kids and our future community members. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We see the clock.
Good evening, my name is Mike Bronson, I'm a volunteer with the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, I'm a part of the Education Committee with Mr. Smallwood and Reverend Green, and in the spirit of the evening, I'm here to represent our NAACP branch by going through some examples of what we're happy about when it comes to the school board here at ASD, making help, some of the examples of some of the tools and decisions that you face that help make the school board great. First, let me point out that we're on your side, that we recognize the importance and the difficulty of the job that you all do up here, so we want to thank you for your service. The, what I want to point out in particular is that we're happy with the board developing accountability for proficiency in reading and math and science, and accountability by way of graduation rates as well. I encourage you to stick with that, it's a long road to walk, admit you're doing the right thing by sticking to your efforts to develop your accountability to the public when it comes to proficiency in reading, math, and science. And we're also happy the board has a number of tools and the means to get academic improvements that we're all hoping for and striving for in the district. Just for a few examples, we're happy that you have $800 million a year as a pool of resources, particularly for teachers and classroom instruction. We're happy that you have evidence-based recommendations from Picas and Odin, for instance, to point to the value of pupil-teacher ratios of 15. We're happy you have the data to show you the path to go down to improve academic performance in the district. We're happy you have another recent tool, that is from the Legislative Task Force that convened earlier this year, is a set of recommendations from many of our favorite legislators, both Republican and Democrat, about how to become stronger as a school district and stronger statewide when it comes to teaching reading at various levels, from technical level to policy level. So we're glad you have that at hand. And last but not least, we're glad that you have some direction from the Superior Court several years ago, that pointed out the value of pre-K education as a key link in achieving constitutional adequacy for instruction statewide. So thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on a non-agenda or non-action item at this time?
Yes, sir, if you could state your name and spell it.
My name is Tremaine Wilson, T-R-E-M-A-Y-N-E.
Begin.
There it is, okay. I am 100% disappointed in the administration in this building, Meers Junior High, Diamond High School, hold nobody accountable for wrongs done to students. They will hold the students 100% accountable for things, policy... They will hold the students 100% accountable for things, policy that, or minor policy infractions, that a student really don't have any control over some of the times. So if they can hold the students accountable, then why can't the administration hold the administration from the schools accountable, your administration, Dr. Bishop? And I have sent your email stating what the problem was, and I have heard nothing. It's been, what, two, three months? Do you know who I am? And I haven't heard anything? Can you give me a reason why?
We don't discuss.
Exactly. Exactly. And you don't do it in private either. I gave you every opportunity to call me, my phone number, my email, nothing. Michael Scott at Mears held my daughter accountable for something that she did not do. The first time he did this was-
Point of order. We cannot have personal identification in public testimony.
Well, I'm sorry about that, but he works for the school district, I don't care. So I'm going to talk the way I want to.
Excuse me, you're not going to?
Yes, I am. You're not going to tell me what I'm going to do and what I'm not. See, that's the problem here. You guys think you can tell the parents what they can do?
No, sir, we don't. But I am telling you, we have, no, sir.
Listen to me. You just said you don't respond to the public, so be quiet, please, it's my turn.
No, sir. It's not your turn, your turn is over.
No, it isn't. I'm going to stay here for the next 45 seconds, and-
Can you turn his mic off, please?
So, the, Michael Scott held my daughter accountable for something that she did not do. She looked at a student and was saying for two days, "For looking at students." I talked to Jill from upstairs, she told me that she, that Michael Scott would have to remedy the wrong. And he still hasn't dropped. And then they followed him here, suspended her from the bus for something all the students on the bus were doing. I had to drive to school for a whole week. Longer people accountable.
Do we have anybody else that would like to testify? Yes, sir. And this is our non-agenda, non-action item, sir. Yes. And if you could, your name and spell it, please.
My name is Christopher Morgan, and this is my daughter. And she's a third grader at Aquarian School. And I apologize for signing up the last time to talk, and I wasn't able to. She was sick, and so I had to leave early. I'm going to make this real brief. I know you've heard a lot of comments. I've sent emails to all of you, and I've gotten responses from several of you. I really appreciate it. I'm a lifelong Alaskan. I was born here in 1966, Providence Hospital, where, funny enough, my wife now works. And I'm an older parent, but I have learned a lot over the years. And my mother was a superintendent of the Tom Thun Montessori Schools way back when for Margaret Green. Some of you old timers might recognize that name. My father was Lieutenant Colonel for the old Fort Richardson, which is now Jay Bear. So I've got a lot of family ties. My family's been here a long time. I'm extremely happy when our daughter was elected through the lottery to get into Aquarian School.
Sir, I'm sorry. I would like to ask for the Chair to suspend the rules in regard to this testimony, because your daughter was sick last time. And what you're speaking to is actually an action item, but this is not an action item. But I would like to suspend the rules and allow our testifier to continue.
Okay.
You have a young child with you.
I think you need a Board member to move that. And I so move. I'd move to suspend the rules and allow the testimony.
All right. So please continue, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Thank you, Mrs. Bishop. As I was saying, I, we were, my wife and I were thrilled when our daughter was picked to go to Aquarian. We had gone to approximately eight of the schools, to the open houses and toured the schools, and Aquarian was one of our top choices. I volunteer at the schools every week. I'm either there, my wife's there. We try to do help out with reading, field trips, et cetera. My daughter's getting a wonderful education. I couldn't be happier with the teachers that I've seen. She's, now, this is going to be her fourth year. I, very impressed with the overall benefits. It's just, it's a very intensive program, but at the same time, it's, it's, she feels very comfortable, and this is a child that looks forward to going to school each and every day. And there are hardships, yes. We live on the east side of town, we have to drive her every day to the west side of town, pick her up, pack her lunches, because there's no school lunch program and no busing. But again, that's something we signed up for, and we're more than happy to do that. But what I would like to see is, I would love to see Aquarian treated as are the other schools. We live right down the street from Airport Heights, and it's a brand-new school, wonderful building, beautiful parking lot facilities. And we just would like to see, you know, Aquarian given the same opportunities those students who are ASD students being taught by ASD teachers. We would love to see the, see them-
Get some actions forward, as well as just let you know it's American Education Week. So I wanted to start with Chugak Eagle River, because there's quite some, quite a few interests from the community in regard to the bond and feedback. And at the time, I just wanted to share what, what happened. And certainly, the review of the timeline and the documentation is under Hot Topics, so there's some concern about really a closed process, but wanted to share with the community as well as the Board. Anything that was done at the time is actually logged, and the information in regard to feedback is on the website. And so if we can go, just to have a mind's eye, so that folks can really fish for this if they had questions. Certainly, here it is, if you go under Hot Topics, you'll just click it on, and other Hot Topics are on there as well, that you might be interested in. But then it will go to different topics and subjects. We have lots going on, and the Chugak Eagle River Future Planning is right next to the earthquake update. And it has some information regarding to last year. It really archived the surveys or community meetings and resources that can be looked at. In regard to the community meetings, if you were to just open up the community meetings, you can then see the feedback that was either taken via a handwritten, some, some people weren't comfortable sharing in front of others at the meetings. We actually put them into rooms. The rooms in which people gave their feedback were actually listed, and we also have information from surveys as well as the direct community feedback. I wanted to share within this timeline that you can take a look, but how the process really proceeded from there, in regard to what did we do then? After receiving the community input, the goal initially was to figure out, we had two schools offline in the community of Eagle River that were red-flagged, which could not reopen. And so we had to, very quickly, to continue the education, figure out how can we, what can we do with children? And so during that week, as well as moving into the future, as you know, we took Eagle River Elementary, and they were divided amongst three schools at the time. Presently, they're in four different schools. And the Greening Middle School was moved into Chugak. So we moved them into Chugak. But as we were getting the community input in regard to that process, what became very clear, when we went to ask about Greening in Eagle River, was this other interest that showed up at the time through just speaking in the large groups, about the interest of combining the schools. So when we had gone out, the process was focused on Greening Middle School. What we found out when we went to the schools was that there was this bigger interest in regard to combining Chugak and Eagle River, and then actually, at the Christmas time, they wanted to remove Eagle River High School students last year and put them in Chugak at mid-year, so that Greening could have then the building. And so in knowing that we had to make decisions, we brought back the information. And in the community groups, the way we found this out was just the sharing of, I'd like them to be put back together, another hint, I'd like them to be separated. Reasons why, academic, course offerings, sports, you know, the kind of, we were, we had more teams, you know, we were able to, at the same time, it was like, well, if they were put back together, my child wouldn't make a team. So they were, they contrasted each other, and there wasn't one way forward. So what had happened, and what the Board did at the time, to refresh everyone's memory, is that we created two different topics. What are we going to do in the short term? Because we have kids from Greening in another building. And what are we going to do the long term? And from that, an ad hoc committee was formed, and they met. And the ad hoc committee was, these folks were on the ad hoc committee. The interest was, is that when we had the meetings, we had Eagle River Elementary meetings at Eagle River High School, to talk about Eagle River Elementary. We had Greening meetings at Chugak, because we wanted to also demystify the high school, you know, the look of the high school. You know, we wanted parents at those meetings to see the high school, that that could be a viable place, a temporary place for kids. What came up at the meeting was that we actually would like to combine the high schools. Knowing that Eagle River High School wasn't invited to the discussion, because it was, anyone could have come, but we didn't specifically say, this is the topic we're going to discuss today. What had happened was an ad hoc committee was created then to actually have that discussion and review the feedback. These were the members of the ad hoc, and you can see that they were represented, represented, a representation, rather, of the School Board of District, the purchasing ASD operating officer ASD, those were district-level. I didn't participate on it, the folks that were in operations did. Of course, we had the principal of Greening, a staff member from Greening, a student from Greening, and a parent from Greening. We had Eagle River members as well, and Eagle River High School members, as well as community members involved in the discussion of what should we do in reviewing the feedback. Because it was, the feedback came in that of the surveys that went out, they asked about short-term, about Greening. And the open-ended responses came back at about 54% to 56%, nobody really addressed that. But of the other 45%, two-thirds brought up combining, and one-third said, absolutely don't combine. So it was not unanimous in the entire survey, but the question was never asked. But the, the information was presented to the ad hoc group, and, and the ad hoc group can speak to the discussions that happened thereof and the movement forward. So I wanted to share that, along with really what, where we are today in regard to that community. As you know, online, there is, the community continues to not be 100% towards, for, or against. And there is a do not unite Eagle River High School and a yes unite Eagle River High School in Chugak. So the communication is in the community, the community is highly involved. Again, at the time of the earthquake, the questions were about Greening, not about the high schools. And so it's apparent that this is a community discussion that the group wants to review again. Presently, I just wanted to share, it is a transparent process, and it was at the time, and the information was on the webpage. Perhaps the idea that nobody listened was that the question being asked wasn't about, should we combine the schools? They were literally about, what are we going to do with Eagle River Elementary School? What are we going to do with Greening and the education of those students? So it's not easy, it's longstanding, there's multiple opinions, both on those social media pages. And it really is a community district versus just a response to two schools. It's, it's actually bigger. Some of the history is that this isn't the first time that the community has had this question. In 1993, $3 million was approved. So this is 20 years ago. The work to address the concerns of the Eagle River-Chugak community were addressed through building another building. And that bond, initial bond for Eagle River High School was passed in 1999. And when we looked at some of, and reviewed in the research, some of the comments, it was, our schools overcrowded at the time. There was a concern about the parking lot wasn't big enough, and the hallways were crammed. And so it was really a call to the School Board to care about our community. So it was, we're in Eagle River, the Anchorage School Board represents Anchorage Bowl, and we're not considered. And so I believe, in researching history, because I wasn't present in this district 20 years ago, this bond was passed. The bond, though, to build it, did not occur until 2003, which was four years later. I'm not sure about the distance in between, if there was another bond that perhaps passed or didn't pass. But the original school of Eagle River High School was $51 million, and it was built smaller than the actual building. The ground was prepared for another addition, so that an addition could be placed on the school if needed. And consequently, some of the feedback in the surveys addressed placing Greening inside of Eagle River if you would build an addition. So that, there were quite, you know, some differences. The bond, again, was a 60% reimbursement at the time, and so that was a really good deal, if you will, from the state. Local dollars, 40%, the state, 60% of the $51 million. Since then, bond debt has gone away, and every, anything that we pass, such as what we're talking about today, in the bond, is 100% local contribution. And what the Board has done over the last few years is ask from the community the continued leveled support of bond, bonds that were paid off, to reinvest those same monies, so that we really don't affect homeowners and taxes and businesses. But the groundbreaking occurred in 2003, the bond passed April, and by August, they were digging up the ground. And in 2005, the school opened. And so Eagle River High School has been there and separated from Chugak since that time. Presently, in December, there is a community meeting that's going to be facilitated by Assembly members Dyson and Kennedy with district support, to just share the information and the data that we have and the evidence from 20 years ago, why the decision was made, what happened during the earthquake, and now where are we with the bigger community ask of, can we reconsider it? But the idea that Anchorage wasn't interested, it wasn't, that there wasn't an interest, that the survey didn't ask it, because initially, when the survey was created, it was literally about Eagle River and Greening. What we heard was, there's a bigger issue in the community. And since that time, that bigger issue has been out there. And there's going to be an attempt to look at that, because then there's discussions about, let's not, let's support a bond, let's not support a bond. There's just too many questions that are coming up in the community, and a way to get them answered, I believe it's early December, is a time for which Assembly people are going to address that. And we offered support, helped with getting a school to have that, that community discussion. So I just wanted to share that with the Board, as lots of information and emails have come to me as well. So I wanted to share the knowledge that we have in regard to this, and the process, and the people involved. Not so easy and to answer, but additionally, just wanted to share about supporting ASD goals. And it's, today, we actually had some testimony about a couple of the items and the work that we are doing to improve student outcomes. And I just wanted to share the evidence in regard to just the high-quality instruction that you heard of going on in our preschools, as well as in our K-12 classrooms. And one of the items that we focused on on November 11th, in-service for teachers while students had off, November 11th, we really talked about the effective practices. And then continuing on is professional learning community. So if you hear of PLCs at schools, that is the professional learning community learning about how to improve our practices. And then the middle school, as well as the multi-tiered system of support, which is also called response to intervention. And I'm also going to touch a little bit on the high-quality leadership. In research about what matters for students, those two things matter the most in a school district. Not your superintendent, not your School Board. Evidence demonstrates that high-quality instruction that happens in the classroom, as well as good leadership at schools, matter the most for student success. Also going to share some work done for special education and resources. So with that, I'm just going to share, we had, again, I'm just going to pick up some information from the testimony today of practices that are happening in classrooms, and it's kind of- And it's kind of funny about data, but really, these practices, the data does support high-quality practices. And of these, there's a research, which is a metacognition of thousands of education research about different things that we teachers do to be able to impact student learning. And the researchers have taken that and quantified it with how much effectiveness does it have? In the whole scheme of things, if you have a .4, and the green part of that graph represents .4, if you have statistical significance and an impact of .4, that's about a year's worth of growth. And one thing that we promise in our classrooms is that if you're with us for a year, you're going to get a year of growth. However, we also need to promise catch-up growth for students that maybe didn't come to us with the same assets. Maybe they, English wasn't their first language at home. We want to have all those barriers removed or address them, so that if students need to make more than one years of growth, they can. So the highly effective practices, we have 1 through 30, and some of them skip around, but you can see the effect size, which is the ES there, of 1.39. So it's almost three times what a year-to-year growth is. And these are the things highlighted in yellow that teachers alone can do, that we can do as a system, teachers alone can do without anything else, without anything else to be able to impact student learning. And at the in-service, we had just practices, teacher experts, outside experts, sharing about what are the practices that matter most. And I'm happy that in preschool, this was also shared, about the types of practices that matter most for student learning. And the second most effective practice is actually having good leadership. And that starts with building principals, with directors. And so if we don't have those two things in place, we may not get the outcomes that the board has set its goals. So we are working with the Center for Educational Leadership in learning how to redesign the district office to focus the support on schools and principals to do their job, removing barriers to be able to get the real work of education done. Wanted to share that as well. We're also working with the Wallace Foundation and received a grant in regard to studying this process. They are going to actually do an outside study on our work with principal leadership, as well as the support of principals. So we hope to bring you back evidence of the work that's being done. And then lastly, in this category, is create your future. We have hot off the press, some information in regard to transition from secondary education into the adult world. And this is specifically for some of our students that have experienced disabilities, as well as others, and it's resources on, our goal is to create great citizens, citizens that can contribute to our community, that don't only consume from the community. We are collectively working towards that and giving students an opportunity to learn what they need to learn, in any capacity to create their future. So that is just one, another piece of work. This vaping conference, I hope it serves to frighten us all in regard to what the CDC is calling an epidemic. The superintendents that are listed on the sheet were selected to attend a one-day seminar in Philadelphia at the American Heart Association Conference. And the conference is really for medical professionals, but they had a one session during a day in regard to simply vaping. And the CDC representative was there, as well as a surgeon general representative, and two other medical doctors that work on this issue of vaping. And one thing I want to share is a thank you to the Assembly of the City of Anchorage, municipality of Anchorage. We were one of the first cities, the second one, I believe, was Sitka, in the entire state to raise the age to be able to purchase vaping products from 19 to 21. There is a nationwide movement to not only raise the age to purchase vaping products, but also to eliminate the flavored vapor products. It had some legs, now it's pulling back a little bit. But this conference really scared me into believing that we have to do something. And President Marsette is going to work with our student advisory board, as well as schools, in an effort from the board to have an outreach. But here's some information that should share with us, and students probably will say it's actually more than this, but self-reported on reports nationally, the use of vaping products. And vaping is different than e-cigarettes. Vaping does not have to have nicotine in it. Vaping could have other chemicals, it could have THC in it. And then e-cigarettes are the electronic, actually cigarettes with nicotine. But vapes could also have nicotine. So there's, we're learning quite a bit about new devices. But anyway, upwards of one-third of seventh through 12th graders across the country have used vaping products. And the doctor from the CDC shared that, they apologized, actually, that they're asleep at the wheel, that they're about to use the E-word, calling this an epidemic in the United States, that they, we have such a severe use, and they don't know how to stop it. That the general cessation practices to stop young people, or anyone, from smoking combustible cigarettes are not working. And they've been studying it for eight years, and we're getting traction now in this subject because young people are dying from vaping products. And their fear is that this acute sickness, lung sickness, is going to only last a little bit, and once they figure it out, the companies like Juul will say, see, that was just the bad products, we're better products. But in fact, they're saying, all e-cigarettes and vaping, that they cannot find, that they are operating and they're different on the brain, that generally, young people, when they go to college, smoke, you know, for whatever reason. But when they, when they have education and you get out, they're successful at stopping students from smoking. They cannot, and they have not identified, research-based practices that they use for cessation of cigarettes now, to stop vaping. They believe that it's more than the nicotine, that it's actually the chemical reaction on young people's brains. And they are fearful. So they're reaching out to schools across the country, because the only way that they know how to deal with it at this time is to actually stop it, stop kids from picking it up, and then figure out how to get kids and other young people. The biggest target by the marketing agencies are our kids, our young people. And this lady from the CDC said, we can share this with you, that the advertising and marketing from these companies, you can look at it like it's getting the horse to the water. They are targeting young people, getting them to just try it, because their friends are, it's cool, it's safer than smoking, which are all untrue. The marketing is false. The flavor of those e-cigarettes and vaping is what gets the horse to drink, because it's, you know, it's sour apple, it's bubble gum, it's cotton candy, flavors that young people would like. So the flavor, then, is getting the kids to drink, or to try vaping. And then the nicotine that are in the products are keeping them going back. And again, their biggest fear, and of this panel of, from the surgeon general representatives to the Center for Disease Control, was that they cannot figure out, they have not identified cessation programs for smoking do not work with vaping. So something else is going on in the, in the brain. And so that's a call to action to us. And we've shared with President Marsette, we're going to organize really some efforts to get kids involved. One of the things that have worked, it's part of our underdeveloped minds and young people, that they're, you know, they're just, they're powerful, nothing bad can happen to them. And that's actually part of evolution. We want that to happen, so that they can grow and not live in fear. But that feeling of invincibility sometimes clouds kind of good judgment, and we all know that, we were young once. And what they shared was that sharing the negative impacts, what it does on your body, hasn't helped. But what young people don't like is being taken advantage of. So what has worked, has shared the advertising and marketing with kids, and then they go, whoa, they're taking advantage of us. And then that's what has started young people really fighting for themselves and disagreeing with this marketing. So we're going to try a little bit about, out with that. As President Marsette is the representative to the student advisory board, kind of worked through that. But I wanted to spend a little extra time, because this was significant new research that was just released on Friday. And for the top doctors in our nation to say that they are about to use the E-word for vaping and cigarettes should be a wake-up call to all of us. But a special thank you to the City of Anchorage, the municipality, our Assembly, for being the first to raise the purchasing age to 21, because that, that's going to help a little bit. And the next one is, it's American Education Week, and it's happening right now, 18th to 22nd. We are so happy to be in this profession, to work with our families and community members, to bring goodness into our world. And education is a privilege, as well as a right in our country. And I'm proud to have this, as well as the educators in ASD, as my choice of work. Thank you. That concludes my superintendent report.
Are there any board comments or questions for the superintendent's report? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you so much for the report. And I was on the ad hoc committee for the Chugiak-Eagle River, for the Greening stuff. And unfortunately, every single one of the meetings, I, when the meetings were scheduled, I was out of town. So I actually didn't end up really participating in that. So it was good to have that overview again. I'm just curious, since Assembly people, Dyson and Kennedy are going to be having that session with their community out there, the Chugiak-Eagle River community, to have a really explicit discussion about the high school thing that we've been getting all the emails about, how does, how does that impact how we proceed as a board on the bond?
So I would say, we have already postponed this vote on the bond, and we have to vote on something tonight to get it, to make the deadline for the staff to get something to the municipality.
I would concur that we need to move forward. However, our timeline to get it to the municipalities, then their discussions, and during this time, if they find out new information and come to different conclusions, because again, the question was never asked, the focus was never that question. What we can do is, then the Assembly can't just change the bond, they have to come back to the board to get some concurrence. Last year, if you recall, $4 million was added for earthquake repairs, and the board could just write a resolution in support of that. And then that assisted in moving it forward, because in order to have a, be able to vote in April, it has to go through bond council. So keeping this and working in conjunction with the Assembly, as the president stated, is probably, would allow for any outcome of that meeting to be addressed.
You're welcome. Any other board comments or questions? Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number 46, personnel report, and October 15th, 2019, executive and regular session minutes.
Second.
Board members, please vote. Yeah. So at this time, procedures for agenda item testimony, and this is for action items, are as follows. As the action item memo is first introduced by the vice president and seconded by another board member, I will open the floor for public testimony. And I do have a list of individuals that'll sign up. We'll go through those first, and then ask for any additional testimony as time allows. I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes. The monitor is in front, so now you can see the timer. And just be cognizant of your time, so that everybody has a chance to speak, and conclude, finish your sentence when your three minutes are over. After all testimony closes, I'll open it up to the board discussion, followed by student board representative vote, before finally calling on the official vote. The voting will be displayed on the screen to the left here. And so I'm going to call two names. Oh, yeah, we probably want to do that.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 058, the request to name the Diamond High School's sports field in honor of Don Winchester.
Second.
Okay, we have Tina Johnson. Oh, sorry, sorry. You didn't give me time to fantage. And Steve Nerling. Is Don in the house?
No, there's a reason why. Good evening, President Marston, School Board members, and Dr. Bishop. It's a pleasure to speak to this memorandum. And I know that you probably have received several letters of support. I was asked to write a letter at the beginning of the fall, and wrote that letter September 26th. I hope that you had a copy of it. But I'd like to just go ahead and read it anyway, and clarify that we support the naming of the field, the Don Winchester Field. The stadium will remain the Diamond Alumni Association Stadium. So on behalf of A.J. Diamond High School, I'm delighted to provide this letter of support for the naming of Diamond High School's sports stadium after Don Winchester. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Winchester for 10 years, and have witnessed the incredible work he has done, and continues to do every year for Alaska sports. There are significant contributions that Mr. Winchester is known for, such as the design and creation of the first high school turf field and stadium at Diamond High School. Mr. Winchester's generosity extended throughout the school, throughout the district, with the organization and completion of turf fields and stadiums for all the Anchorage School District's high schools. Mr. Winchester was instrumental in lobbying to the Alaska Legislature for a $50 million allocation to bring a new sports arena, the Alaska Airlines Center, to the University of Alaska Anchorage campus. He has collaborated with others on many projects that are successful, programs and tournaments today, such as the implementation of girls' flag football, American Legion baseball, the creation of the McKay Baseball Park, the South Anchorage Baseball Field, and most recently, the implementation of middle school baseball in the Anchorage School District. In addition, Mr. Winchester has established various sporting tournaments throughout the state of Alaska, such as the Alaska Shootout and the Alaska Airlines Basketball Classic Tournament. A 1969 Diamond alum, president of the Diamond Alumni Association, and a 40-year business owner, Mr. Winchester demonstrates an unwavering dedication to the school community, the Anchorage School District, and the state of Alaska. Mr. Winchester's commitment to the success of sports programs and the success of students is his legacy. His humility and dedication is honorable. One can find Mr. Winchester working at the Diamond Stadium, mowing the grass, lawns, or plowing the field or track in preparation for spring sports, particularly soccer. Thousands of students have benefited from Mr. Winchester's vision to bring equity or equality and opportunity to Alaska sports. In addition, the DAA has awarded $500,000 in scholarships and donated thousands of dollars to the maintenance and upkeep of the Diamond Stadium. Mr. Winchester is highly respected and loved by the Diamond community. Undoubtedly, Mr. Winchester's contributions to Alaska sports and the Diamond community have been impactful. He has received several awards, such as the Alaska Hall of Fame Joe Floyd Award, and the Anchorage School District School Business Partnership Spirit of Tomorrow Award. Mr. Winchester demonstrates through his work and the community, a love for youth... Mr. Winchester demonstrates through his work and the community, a love for youth and genuine care for the success of our youth. The commemorative naming of the Diamond Sports Stadium in recognition, respect, and gratitude for Mr. Don Winchester's contributions to the academic and athletic success of Anchorage students is befitting. And I'd like to have Mr. Steve Nerlin also speak in support of this, okay? Thank you.
I know our time is limited, but there is a reason that Mr. Winchester is here is we would like to surprise him with this. So I'm going to ask for not only the boards, should you approve this, but the audience and our media here. We'd like to surprise him at a Diamond Alumni or school assembly that the principal would schedule. He does not know about this, his family knows about it. But I didn't want to make him know about it because he would probably decline. He'd say, no, I don't want that. But he deserves it. So that's my other comments. The principal said it well. I provide some other information. So can we keep it? Everybody's had a great experience with a surprise birthday party. So let's try to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on memorandum 058? Okay, I'll open it up for board discussion. Mr. Holloman.
I'm going to say I've never actually met Mr. Winchester in person, but I've had several phone conversations with him through some other work I do. I fell into a position to make some repairs on a piece of equipment for one of our high schools, and he was facilitating that. It had nothing to do with Diamond. And again, the same sort of thing. It wasn't a starring role, it wasn't something that brought any glory. He was simply assisting another booster club at another school in getting something done. And it was clear to me that he's one of a lot of people in the community that does a lot of work like that. It is part of what makes Anchorage great or makes our school system great. I had no idea how much involvement he's had with Diamond for so many years. It really is incredibly impressive. But he does a lot of stuff that's never going to make this list even as well. So it is an honor to be able to vote for this.
Any other board comments or Mr. Donlin?
As a 72 graduate of Diamond High School and someone who played on the football field there before this new field was placed, I'm very pleased to support this naming of the field.
Okay, there's no other board discussion or questions. Could we have our student rep vote, please?
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And ASD memorandum 058 passes unanimously. Congratulations.
But don't tell anybody.
But don't tell anybody. Secret safe.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 051 and authorize the superintendent to utilize best value project delivery method for the Orion Elementary School roof replacement project.
Second.
So any public testimony on memorandum 051? Seeing no public testimony, is there any board discussion? Seeing no board discussion, can I have the student vote, please?
Yes.
And memorandum 051 passes with seven yeas unanimously. Thank you.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 039, bond proposition one, district-wide earthquake recovery, security improvements, and planning and design, including seismic resilience and mitigation, and planning and design in the amount of $76.03 million.
Second.
And at this time, we do have several signed up to testify. I will call your name. And I apologize, I don't have my glasses, so I may need help. Dale.
Laffornais?
Laffornais?
Laff, it's a Laffornais, all right.
Thank you. And Heidi Whalen? And Dale, you'll go first.
Okay.
As you see the clock.
My name is Dale Laffornais, and I'm going to sound like a Grinch, but I'm here to oppose adding Inlet View Elementary to the 2020 school bond. ASD is citing age and overcrowding as reasons to tear down the existing school and build a new one. Age is not a valid reason. Yes, the school is 60 years old, but it has been inspected and deemed to be structurally sound and safe for the students. As with any aging building, there may be some items that need to be repaired or replaced. The $3.34 million ASD is proposing to spend on a design would be better spent on repairing or replacing those items. Might I add, the White House is over 200 years old, and no one is suggesting tearing it down and building a new capital. There is nothing wrong with a school that is old. Inlet View was specifically designed with scaled-down features that are suitable for children. The single-story design makes for quick, safe exits. The concrete construction has proven itself against massive earthquakes and is fire-resistant. As for the overcrowding, this situation has been created by allowing zone-exempt students to attend Inlet View instead of going to the schools they are zoned for. They should attend their own schools. If it were only those students who are actually zoned for Inlet View attending, that would alleviate the overcrowding and classes would be the appropriate size. Demographics change. In some years, the school may be slightly over capacity; in some years, it will be under. If ASD needs a larger school, then it should be built somewhere else. Any new building, larger and possibly commercial size, will have a permanent negative impact on the surrounding area. There will be additional exterior lighting, constant noise emanating from the building, and a lot of additional exhaust from the idling vehicles waiting to pick up children. The children and staff are able to leave at the end of the day, but the neighborhood will have to live with these disturbances all day, every day. As our elected officials, the voters rely on you to make sound decisions on their behalf. It is your responsibility to take into consideration how this new school will affect everyone. While many who live in this area no longer have school-aged children, they are still affected by the daily activity of the school. Now is not the time to ask the taxpayers for $23 million for an unnecessary project. We are in a recession, and many already struggle financially. Many are retired and on fixed or limited incomes. Burdening the voters with higher taxes is not in their best interest. Being asked to spend money now for a building that is not needed may make the voters question how money will be spent later. Schools that truly need the money may be denied their request for funding. At this time, the voters do not have the information needed to make an informed decision on this issue. For these reasons and more, Inlet View Elementary should not be included on the 2020 school bond. Thank you.
If I could have Lincoln Garrick, did I say that right? Lincoln? All right. And Heidi, when you see the clock, you can begin.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Whalen, and I'm speaking to you tonight as both an Aquarian parent and a member of the APC. I'd like to start by thanking you on behalf of our community for the time and effort you have all dedicated to the very serious facility issues facing Aquarian charter school right now. Together and under President Starr's direction, we dedicated many hours of meetings to an ad hoc committee process to identify a path forward. After reviewing the options, the ad hoc committee voted five to three to recommend adding Aquarian to this year's package for up to $10 million. Tonight, we ask you to honor that committee's process and recommendation. At the same time, we understand that the board is trying to balance many needs. We've taken a hard look at the $8.9 million of recommended work in the district's report for Aquarian and pared it down to what we believe is absolutely essential for a safe, dry, and warm school by any standards. The cost of this safe, dry, and warm package is estimated at $6.5 million and would replace and protect the exterior building envelope, replace the aged and unreliable heating system, address interior damage, and ensure a healthy school environment, make critical investments in ADA and security. Replacing the roof will remove the buckets from our hallways. And with a long rainy winter ahead, I can tell you that a new roof that doesn't leak would absolutely be a relief. But a roof-only package would also ignore several other major components that are urgently needed. If your intention is to allow Aquarian to continue to serve as a vibrant public school using this ASD facility, a place that we've called home for 18 years, please invest the minimum necessary to ensure our students are safe, dry, and warm for 20 more years. Some of you may look to the deferred maintenance prioritization process for guidance on what is fair and right to include in a package. Here's what we know for sure. ASD's 2015 Prioritize Unfunded Needs List included over a dozen Aquarian projects, and the amount we're asking for is comparable to other elementary school roof replacement projects over the past two bond cycles. In just two days, over 325 Aquarian parents and caregivers signed this letter that I've been enlisted to share with you. Aquarian community, please stand up. Dear Anchorage School Board, our ASD kids go to school every day in an ASD facility. Like all kids, they deserve a learning environment that is safe, dry, and warm. We ask with one voice that you add these urgent facility repairs to the 2020 bond package in order to keep our children's school safe, dry, and warm for years to come. Repairing the ASD facility that houses Aquarian ensures the future of an Anchorage public school with a 22-year track record of success. By including the ASD facility that houses Aquarian on the bond, the ASD gains a community of mobilized voters and advocates who support passing the 2020 school bond package. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Tara Williams, did I say that right? Tiara, sorry. And Lincoln, you can begin when you see the clock.
Sounds good. First, I want to say thank you for your service on the Anchorage School Board. As someone who has served on municipality boards in the past, I appreciate your donation of time and talent. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, for being here as well, even though you're not a volunteer. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. So my name is Lincoln Garrick, and I have a daughter, Iris Bloom, who is an amazing fourth grader at Aquarian. Many people have shared over the last several weeks personal and passionate stories, and there's likely more to come. I'm a business professor at Alaska Pacific University, and thinking about the bond issue, I couldn't but help but think about it as an economic question. At the end of the day, the discussion about the building that Aquarian occupies being placed on the bond is really about scarcity. Aquarian is a public ASD school with ASD staff, teachers, and students. Alaska charter schools like Aquarian have access to municipality bonds. Some other charter schools have sought private leases or mortgages, but Aquarian is in an ASD building and has paid rent and maintenance per the law for that privilege. If there is no limit to the amount the taxpayers would accept for school district maintenance, then all the needs and wants of the 46,000-plus ASD students could be paid for. But there's a scarcity problem. So how do you manage that? That's the question, right? Well, once you've reduced the wants and are just paying for needs, once you've optimized for efficiency and you're getting the most for your investment, then you have to make choices. And time and time again, Alaska taxpayers have approved bond packages that protect assets. I've worked on many marketing campaigns for municipality bond packages. Alaskans fully understand and appreciate a good old-fashioned cost-benefit analysis. The cost of making the safe, warm, and dry repairs to the ASD building asset that Aquarian occupies will be far less costly than replacing the building or the future catastrophic failure of the building. The benefit of having a vibrant school in the Sponard area has been well communicated by that community. The benefit of the Aquarian program continuing to provide a balanced educational experience that is academically rigorous in core subjects while also giving students access to language, art, technology, and joy is undeniable. You have lightning in a bottle at Aquarian. You have highly qualified teachers, many of which are grading behind us right now. We have motivated students. We have dedicated parents, and we have some of the most advanced and proficient results in the district. I ask that you protect the ASD building that Aquarian occupies, recognize the benefit to the community of the program in the Sponard area, and acknowledge the great things that have and will continue to happen at the top-notch ASD school. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Jennifer Wing. And when you see the clock.
Hi. Hello. I am very nervous. I'm not any good at this. I've been avoiding coming and speaking in front of all of you for so long. I've left it in the hands of all of the amazing teachers at Aquarian, the parents, my friends, their little ones. I finally found some courage with a lot of help. I'm really glad that I came. I was also hesitant to come because I didn't think I'd be able to tell you guys what you have been hearing or haven't heard already for the last three months or two months. Of course, the leaking roof, the buckets in the hall at Aquarian, and the gymnasium and the classrooms, limited heat. Of course, we all know we're in an ASD building with ASD children. So I'll just speak from the heart. That's all I can do. I really, truly love this school, and I am just another parent there, but I love my kids more than anything in the world. And I get really emotional when I talk about Aquarian. I love that school. I love everybody in that school. I tell you, I don't know if you've been there or have friends there or kids or can go visit. I can meet you there, and we can do a tour. It's amazing. I'm serious. I'm always there. But you go in, and you'll see for yourself the unique style of teaching, the amazing brain breaks that I don't think my nine-year-old would be able to get through a day without. All the exploration days, just the fun and neat, unique things we do every, or they do every day. I talk about this school to all my friends, my neighbors, family in and out of state, and cars, and the checkout line, at swim lessons, speed skating lessons. I'm always talking about this school because we do so many great things, and I always want to share them. Sounds like I'm bragging, but that's not my intention. But sometimes. But when you, I drop my kids off every morning. We have no bus system. I walk them into class almost every morning. I get them settled, and I leave. And it sounds funny, but I have this state of ataraxia. I feel amazing, and I feel really good. And that school does that to you. I have a fourth grader, I have a second grader, and my little Lucas, who's a toddler, he'll be there in three years. And everybody knows little Lucas. I'm able, everybody knows Lucas. I'm able to volunteer two to three days a week in my child's classroom for reading and writing groups. And one thing that makes Aquarian stand out is that I'm allowed to bring my toddler. Every teacher tells me, year after year, is he's always welcome, as long as he's not a major distraction. He's family, and he's a part of the school, a part of the classroom. And that is what makes Aquarian stand out. We're a family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could have Coette.
Thibodeau.
Thibodeau?
What do I do? Just talk? Okay. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Wing. I live out in Chugiak. I have an 11th grader at Chugiak High, and I also have a 2018 graduate. I'm here today to ask that you oppose the school bond package. I will be a no vote at this time because of the $400 million line item to rebuild Grooning Middle School. I am not your typical no vote. In fact, I have never voted against a school bond package. I believe in education, good education, and good public schools. In general, I'm a supporter of smaller schools. However, when I look at the current budget situation, both at the state and the municipal levels, I do not see smaller high schools benefiting our students. I see our kids losing opportunities. My elder son has struggled in his engineering program because he has not had high school programming classes. My younger son this year is not taking AP Physics 2 because there's not enough interest in a small school. These are examples of how our schools are losing out. For struggling students, nothing is better than a smaller school, but it's easier for a principal to juggle class numbers at a larger school. My sister is a high school principal and has said that a larger school principal has greater flexibility in what they're able to do with their classes. I'm also a solid no vote because of what I perceive as the district's lack of transparency in dealing with the Chugiak Eagle River area on this issue. Last year, at this time, many of you were out in Chugiak. Fantastic immediate response to the earthquake. I mean, you guys could not have done a better job. It was truly impressive. But at that time, immediately afterwards, there were a lot of questions that our community raised about what to do with Grooning in particular. We were promised that there would be additional meetings to hear our concerns. Those never happened. There was that ad hoc committee. It was poorly advertised. It was rushed. It didn't, as you announced today or talked about today, didn't address the high school concerns at all. To the community's view, the committee pretty much came to a preconceived resolution. It frustrates me in the paper to read that people on the board were unaware of our concerns, especially when, as you mentioned tonight, a huge number of people wrote in on the survey and said that we thought the school, that you should look at combining the two high I believe that you owe us, your constituents, a transparent process on our future education possibilities. And until that time, I urge a no vote on this bond. I also want to point out a few things. Oh, and I'm done.
And Michael. I can't read that. I have my glasses.
Streisak?
Streisak? Thank you. I really need to find my glasses. And Colette, you can begin.
All right. I'm Colette Thibodeau. I'm a parent of a student at Chugiak High School, and I have a child at Mirror Lake Middle School. And I am completely unorganized. I'm going to come up here and blabber probably mostly, but I'm going to borrow a little thing from one of the other speakers. Can everybody step up who's involved, both Eagle River and Chugiak? Please step up, stand up, please. Come on, there's more people than that. Everybody stand up who's involved with either Chugiak High School or Eagle River High School or Mirror Lake.
Grooning.
Okay. Or Grooning. Any of the schools that are involved, thank you very much. Okay. This was very short notice. I'm sure we would have had much more people that would come, but the roads are very icy out there, too. So my big thing, I don't, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry? Okay. I'm still undecided. I'm still on the fence. I'm leaning more one way than the other. But I would, hearing what other issues are on the bond, I would hate to lose, them to lose out because we have some issues that need to be addressed. Like Jen was saying, there's a lot of stuff that we don't know. We've never been, had these answered, questions answered. And there's a lot of tensions going on in the valley, or in our area, in our little community. I don't want us to be an excluded part of ASD, but we're tearing each other apart within our own community because nobody has relieved that tension by answering our questions or even talking to us or proposing anything. I would like some more full disclosure on what this bond is proposing to help us with. We are, like I said, this is very emotional for all of us. We all equally want to see our children succeed and be successful, and we're all going to have to make sacrifices. That darn earthquake happened to all of us. And no one school is, you know, less affected than any other, but we're all going to have to suck it up and make this work. So there's a lot of stuff on Facebook right now. I'm trying to keep it as neutral as possible, but there's emotions in this. We're invested in all this. So be excited that we have a community that's this invested in the school program and our futures, but we need to see some more from you guys that's going to help us out making this decision on this bond. I don't see it going because there's so much unknown, but I would like to see that there's repairs and everything that's fixed. And, okay, I'm done. I'm going to stop shaking now. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it Jason? Did I say that right? Jason? Okay. Mark. I can't read the writing.
Mark Feynman.
Mark Feynman. Okay, thanks, Mark. And Michael, you can begin when you see the clock.
Good evening. Thank you for giving the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm here to speak on behalf of renovating or rebuilding Inlet View Elementary School. I spoke last year when this issue was before you, and I'm back because I find this a significant topic. My name is Mihail Streisak, and my son attends first grade at Inlet View. I also have a younger boy who will be attending there in a couple of years. First, I would like to thank you for your support of the IB program at Inlet View. I think it will enhance the educational opportunities for the kids there. When I became a father, my life changed profoundly. The most important thing in my life became my family's welfare. And a key aspect of my kids' welfare is their education. We do the best that we can at home, but we also expect his school to do its part. Inlet View is a good school with dedicated teachers and staff. I volunteer there so I have an opportunity to see firsthand the good work and dedication. My son enjoys school, and he has learned a great deal since beginning kindergarten there a year and a half ago. I am grateful that my son was given the opportunity to attend Inlet View. But Inlet View is also an old building, the oldest school in the district. There are constant maintenance problems. Renovations or rebuilding of Inlet View has been discussed and delayed for many years, and the school has only grown older and in greater need of an upgrade. A new or renovated school would permit teachers to make use of new technologies and new ideas in teaching and free them from having to contend with problems like classrooms that are too cold, too hot, or infested with pests. Good public schools are an asset for the city, and they draw and retain parents with children. An improved Inlet View would be an asset to the neighborhood because it would attract parents with elementary-age children. Anchorage cannot be a vibrant city without good public schools. I wholeheartedly support the bond proposal to renovate or rebuild Inlet View. Long before I had kids, I voted for bond measures to fund various schools, even though this increased my property taxes because I believed that good public schools make for a good city. And I continue to support increasing my taxes to improve our public schools. You must care about our kids, or you wouldn't hold your positions. I ask you, please, to support the bond proposal for renovating or rebuilding Inlet View. Your decision affects what my wife and I and hundreds of other parents hold most dear, our children. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Keith Thayer. And Mark, whenever the clock comes up. There you go.
Good evening, and thank you for taking the time to listen to this community testimony. My name is Mark Feynman, and I am the proud parent of two Aquarian students and an equally proud husband of an Aquarian teacher. Based on my experience in the construction industry over the last 25 years, including working the last 10 years for a local developer, I would like to share my thoughts on the scope of any proposed repairs to the Aquarian building. The RSA Conditions Report commissioned by the school district last year made many recommendations. Some of these suggested upgrades may not be worthwhile, and I understand and fully support the need to responsibly prioritize. However, at the core of this discussion should be implementing those recommendations that ensure the school, which houses ASD students and ASD staff, is fundamentally safe, can be kept dry, and warm. To that end, I support the RSA Report's recommendation to replace the failing roof with a roof that no longer leaks and provides adequate insulation, a new roof that will protect this ASD asset from any further ongoing damage. I support the Condition Report's recommendation to replace the substandard building siding, which has moisture damage, little insulation, and no vapor barrier. The siding will very likely need to be removed anyway when the roof is replaced, as this 55-year-old building will almost certainly need structural upgrades to support the new roof that will require the building siding to be removed in whole or in part anyway. When the siding is replaced, the failing original 55-year-old wood frame windows should also be replaced with functional, working, secure windows. I support the recommendation to replace the building's HVAC systems, which are now operating beyond their useful life expectancy. As the RSA Report indicates, a vast majority of the building's heating systems are not only well beyond their useful life but are also in fair to poor condition and should be replaced. The report further states the potential danger of carbon monoxide poisoning from the failure of this outdated equipment. And while there are carbon monoxide detectors installed in each classroom, just knowledge of this potential risk should be motivation enough to replace these outdated HVAC systems as recommended to protect our children and staff. The report also makes ADA and security recommendations, which in today's climate, there should be no hesitation in adopting. Finally, there is recommended interior work such as replacement of damaged carpet, ceiling tiles, and the like that should be completed to address the years of water damage and ensure healthy air quality. To conclude, I again want to thank the school board and the school district for listening to this public testimony on this topic. We appreciate your continued support for this amazing school, both for the building itself and for the Aquarian community that has built itself around it over the last 18 years.
Thank you. If I could have Steve Nerlin. And Keith, when you see the clock.
Good evening, board members. I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak. Like another parent, I didn't realize this discussion was going to happen until the 5:00 news last night. And so my spouse and I, I volunteered because I grew up in Anchorage. I've been here for 45 years, since being a four-year-old on. I was educated in the Anchorage School District. I graduated from Bartlett High School. And Bartlett at the time had a population of about 1,600 to 1,700 students. I experienced a big school. I experienced the positives. I experienced the negatives. I experienced teachers being assaulted in their classrooms. I experienced it all. And as a father of a ninth grader at Eagle River Elementary, my daughter has attended all her school in Eagle River. I've been very impressed by the quality of teachers, principals, everybody that we've dealt with. From preschool on, she had speech issues, and she was well-handled, and thank the school district for that. I can't believe, and I understand listening, that there are reasons behind it that people oppose this bond to rebuild Grooning. I am full in support of this bond to rebuild Grooning, to the fact that combining two high schools, two in Eagle River I've been watching since it's been built, is a high-achieving school. And my daughter is thriving, not only in academics but in sports, making varsity her first year of flag football. To combine these schools, I see in my mind a revisit to what I experienced at Bartlett High School, and I don't want to see that for my daughter because she would be impacted for this. I would also encourage this not to rush into a short-term solution of putting Grooning students in Eagle River because it's an easy idea, but a long-term solution because this situation is going to go on for 30-plus years. Two high schools that are high-achieving are much better than one school that may not be high-achieving. We know what we have now. Let's keep it. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. If I could have Larry Doherty? 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 Let me see how many ways I can say that. Steve, when you see the clock.
Thank you, President Starr. Full disclosure, been involved with Aquarian for 14 years, grandson that, a graduate of Aquarian, and also three grandsons that are there now, and full disclosure, a former teacher at Aquarian but now the principal at Aquarian daughter-in-law. I've had a fair amount of volunteer political experience, both in the state and in the community. I served on Anchorage Tomorrow advocacy group for school, or for, I'm sorry, for municipal bonds, parks bonds, road bonds, for 10 years, and also on school bonds, the Aspen Organization that supported the Anchorage School Bonds for seven years. And my message today is really just simple, that either please include Aquarian fully in the bond, or if you're going to decide to include part of it in the bond, if you're not going to decide it, don't separate out projects so you put one part of the community against the other. That's a recipe for disaster, and you can go back to assembly bonds and school bonds in the past that have faced that. And so the broader the exposure can be for our community to support the school bonds, the better off it will be from my historical experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Lindsay. I can't read that. Burup? Okay. Oh, Lindsay knew. And Larry, you can begin when you see the clock.
My name is Larry Doherty, and I'm here to urge you to vote no on memorandum 39. I have kids who are attending and have attended Eagle River High School, Chugiak High School, and Grooning Middle School. My opinion is that our kids are being used as pawns by out-of-touch bureaucrats with clear conflicts of interest in this process. In situations like this, it adds fuel to the fire of Eagle Exit. No one blames this board for the earthquake, but where my middle school and high school students are concerned, I blame you for the aftershocks. When is the last time any of you visited Chugiak and Grooning Middle School to experience this for yourselves, talked with faculty at these schools to discuss what they want? One board member tonight admitted that she was on the ad hoc committee and didn't even intend a single meeting. Has this process really been inclusive of true community and valued, valid research? Fact, ASD has a vested interest in maintaining more buildings, not less. Fact, bureaucrats will nearly always push for more bureaucracy, not less, out of interest in self-preservation. Fact, a bond funds more buildings to administrate and more bureaucrats to be paid at the expense of community members who do not want this. Fact, an obscure ad hoc committee of 17 people should not be making a decision for over 40,000 residents of Chugiak Eagle River. Fact, a vote for this bond tonight is a fiscally irresponsible decision by this board and totally out of touch with what our community wants. The current situation of middle schoolers mixed with high schoolers is not safe and could be solved immediately without a costly and unnecessary renovation. Teachers are doing their level best to minimize interaction, but lack of action on your part is literally exposing young children to poor influences, drugs, and possible abuse. My friends, summarize the situation best. We're approaching the one-year mark for November 30th earthquake. Those of us in Eagle River see signs daily of its damage and effects around us. Eagle River was hardest-hit, the hardest-hit community as the epicenter was closest to us. We have businesses that are still closed and are in the process of rebuilding. The most present and daily reminder we have of the earthquake is that we lost two schools that are damaged too badly for use. Grooning middle school students have been housed in Chugiak High for almost a year. Eagle River Elementary's closure have affected almost every school in our town. The school community was broken up and split up between several schools, causing severe overcrowding, two large class sizes. Ravenwood Elementary, for example, is at 150% capacity. Families, school, faculty, and administrators have graciously adapted and tried to manage an impossible situation. The question that has been on this community's mind for almost a year is what is going to happen to these schools? Well, we're reaching our year mark, and the Anchorage School District is not listening to members of our community. They are not listening to the teachers of the affected schools. They are not listening to the administrators of the affected schools, and they are not considering the needs and the students, of the students and the families. I have more to say, but I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. And Lindsay, you can begin when you see the clock, please.
My name is Lindsay Burup. I am an Eagle River resident with a freshman at Chugiak High School, a seventh grader at Grooning Middle School, and a fifth grader at Alpenglow Elementary. The United States Air Force brought us here, and we are now Alaskan residents forever. It does not make sense to require taxpayers to fund a project or a bond for a problem that has an alternate and a better solution. Chugiak High School and Eagle River High School should be combined. Grooning middle school students should move to Eagle River High School. That would allow Grooning Middle School to function as a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade middle school as Mirror Lake and would decrease the overload capacity currently placed on the elementary schools in Eagle River that had to take on students that were displaced from Eagle River Elementary. This would keep middle schoolers with middle schoolers and high schoolers with high schoolers. The simple solution eliminates the proposed $46 million, over half of the total bond proposed, to fund repairs to fix total bond proposed, to fund repairs to fix Grooning Middle School and Eagle River Elementary. When Grooning Middle School was first built in the early nineteen-eighties, there was affirmed, please forgive me for not saying the name correctly, Forell and Elser commissioned by the district after their consultants determined Grooning Middle School, which was supposed to open, fall of nineteen eighty-three. An investigation saw that it was seriously flawed, and that errors in the engineering calculations pointed out that the plans for the school did not receive oversight from Anchorage building inspectors. The district eventually retrofitted the school, which opened to the students in nineteen eighty-four. But Forell and Essler, I'm saying that incorrectly, please forgive me, warned that the inherent design flaws would likely always be an issue. They also said a major earthquake would produce significant damage and possible partial collapse at the school. And currently, we witnessed this on November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. My daughter witnessed it, I witnessed it when I picked her up from that school. Obviously, Forell and Essler were right, and it does not make sense to make taxpayers pay and fix something that is inherently flawed. Grooning Middle School is unsafe, and to think that if you can fix a structure that was flawed at the foundation is frightening. As a parent who had a child at Grooning Middle School during the November thirtieth earthquake, I saw a community come together. I saw Chugiak High School welcome Grooning Middle School with open arms. It's almost been a year to date, both schools are ready to get their space back now. Not in two years, not in four years, not in five years. You need to speak to your Chugiak and Grooning administrators and do something about this, and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do have to say that there were a lot of emails that came in while we were busy getting together here, and so we may have missed some individuals on our testimony. So at this time, I will ask if there's anybody else that would like to testify, please come forward, state your name, and spell it for us, please. Two at a time. And sir, if you could go ahead and give us your name and spell it.
Good evening. Good evening, my name's JP Wood. That's J-P-Wood, spelled W-O-O-D. I have two children that attend Aquarian, a daughter in third grade and a son in kindergarten. Their experience at Aquarian has been nothing short of outstanding, and it's a pleasure as a parent to see their enthusiasm for learning encouraged and supported by the teachers and all of the staff at the school. You've heard plenty of public testimony from others at Aquarian, asking for the inclusion of Aquarian in the school bond package for a project that makes the school safe, dry, and warm, and will extend the life of the building for another twenty years. I'm going to limit my comments to one specific area of Aquarian's request, and that's the positive impact that the project will have on students and other members of the Aquarian community who have physical disabilities. The project includes upgrading classroom sinks to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and additionally, the project will upgrade toilet rooms in the school to comply with ADA requirements. Now, providing the same access to sinks and restrooms at the school for mobility impaired individuals that's enjoyed by others, rather than requiring disabled individuals to use a special facility in a different area, has meaning to those individuals beyond simply complying with the ADA. It can help make those with a disability feel that they are a normal and included part of the community. So beyond compliance with the ADA, it's just the right thing to do. The project will also fix breaks and cracks near the entrance to the school and the ramp that allows access to the entrance. Now, these are identified as tripping hazards in the project report, but they're equally or more of a hazard to an individual with a mobility impairment. When a wheelchair tire rolls into a crack, even if the user is being cautious, there's a chance that the tire and the chair will come to a jarring stop, possibly throwing the person from the chair. Yes, I do have experience in those situations. The project will also replace the floor grills in the gym with ADA-compliant grills. Catching a wheelchair tire in the gap of a floor grill can have the same impact as hitting a crack in the sidewalk. So fixing cracks near the ramp and grills in the gym to provide a hazard-free rolling surface will meaningfully improve the simple act of entering the building or using the gymnasium for those who use a wheelchair or other mobility device. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ryanne Slocum. I'm a parent in Eagle River. I have a high schooler junior at Chugiak High, a freshman at Eagle River High, and two daughters at Ravenwood Elementary. My son was at Greening last year in the gym when the earthquake happened, and I feel it was a miracle that no students were seriously injured. I am here to ask the board to come and meet with the administrators and staff at Chugiak High and at Greening and at our local elementary schools, and ask them how they are adjusting and what they are doing to make it work after the earthquake. I know as a community member and someone who has just today talked to administrators at these schools, that those school communities do not feel heard, they do not feel listened to, and they are wondering when the last time a school board member was in to see how they have been affected by the earthquake. I know from experience from my children, our elementary school, Ravenwood, took in two preschool classes from Eagle River Elementary. I don't hear anything being said about Eagle River Elementary and what the plans are. I think as a whole, as a community, we feel that we are not being listened to, we're not feeling heard, and we're not hearing conversation back to us of what exactly the future looks like, what the plans are, and how badly these buildings were damaged, and what information you're getting. At Ravenwood Elementary, we are at one hundred and fifty percent capacity. We have our sixth grade out in relos, and our teachers are doing their very best, and I applaud the teachers and staff and faculty at all of these schools for making a situation that is impossible the best that it can be for their students. Our community has been listening, researching, and talking to students and teachers. I am urging you to vote no on this bond proposal. It is not what the Eagle River community wants. We want to go back to the table, and we would like to be heard and listened to about what we would like to see happen at Greening. I would never allow my two children who are in elementary school to go to Greening if it was to be repaired, as it is being suggested now. We would either homeschool or go to find another option. And I am not alone in this. Having children at both high schools, I feel that a solution could be found by combining the high schools and allowing our children in Eagle River and Chugiak High to have more options when it comes to their classwork. I have high-achieving students who are not having their needs met because of the limits that are being placed on these buildings by their low capacity. Again, I plead with you to listen to our community, to go into the schools yourself, to talk to the staff and faculty, and to hear what they are experiencing, and to vote no on this bond, and let's go back to the table and come up with a different solution.
Could you spell your name, please? Your last name? And the first name?
My first name is R-Y-A-N-N-E, Ryanne, and then Slocum, S-L-O-C-O-M-B-E.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could state your name and spell it, please.
Thank you, my name is Julie, last name is Lucky, L-U-C-K-Y, and I'm an Inlet View, proud Inlet View parent. I would like to say thank you for your service. I know you've received a lot of emails, we've heard a lot of testimony over a lot of years saying what the problems were at Inlet View Elementary, and I'm not going to go over that list. But what I will say is this, those of you that have been here for a while, saw me a few years ago, and saw me last year, and the parents, just to clarify, the parents, we're not asking for a new school. What we are asking for is those deficiencies that we have mentioned to be fixed. And a few years ago, we were on the bond, or proposed for the bond, and the school board chose to have a study and talk about whether schools should be consolidated, and they paid some consultants, and we came up with that Inlet View should not be consolidated, and they recommended that the school be renewed and repaired. The staff, your staff, your awesome, great staff, has also recommended a couple of times that Inlet View be included on the bond. And then we get to this point of the process where it feels like the planning process comes up with a great idea, oh, we need to take down a school and put up a new school. And then there are members that say, I don't think that that's quite what we need to do. Turnagain had a refurbishment, and that worked really well for them, and so why can't that happen at Inlet View? And so I just want to clarify that the parents at Inlet View, we're not asking for a new school, but we are relying on your staff, your experts, to tell us, and you, and the community, what is the best process for, what needs to be done with the school to fix those deficiencies in the most economical way. And so, what I would ask you today is, if Inlet View's renewal replacement isn't on the bond for this year, please don't kick us down, don't kick our can down the road for another year. Please include at least some planning money to start a process where we can bring community members, not here on April, or, sorry, November nineteenth, sorry, for us, it's April nineteenth, for you guys, it's November nineteenth, when we already, and then we don't have any time, you don't have any time, to listen to some concerns and make an informed decision. So if in fact, the school board does not want to go forward with this renewal and replacement, which is what has been recommended by the experts at this time, then please include some planning funds so that we can start, including the community, and getting that community, either the education or the buy-in, or maybe the community has something that we can tell the experts that keep telling us what we need to be doing with our school, so that we can at least move forward to fix the deficiencies. And the other thing I would just lightly mention is that for the parents, we don't feel that students have been let in on lottery, not on lottery, but through zone exemptions to overcrowd our classrooms. There have been some parents, and some parents are what we call our legacy parents, my daughter is a proud daughter of someone who went to Inlet View Elementary when he was younger, and there are some students that want to come to our school, and I know this board has supported school choice. And I don't believe that our principal has let in enough to make us burst at the seams, but she has let in enough that we can have basically two classes of each, of almost every grade. But we are not overcrowded, we are well-utilized, and we just hope that you will look favorably on Inlet View and keep it successful, and help us figure out how to help you determine the best way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could spell.
Sarah Thomas.
Oh, that's pretty easy.
Yeah, it's pretty basic. Good evening, like I said, my name is Sarah Thomas. I feel very invested in the situation in Eagle River and Chugiak. We currently live in Eagle River, we have a child in Chugiak High School, we have two at Grooning, and we have four at Ravenwood. So I feel like my perspective is very broad. I also was the long-term health substitute last year for a brief moment at Eagle River Elementary, and then carried out through the rest of the year just at Ravenwood due to the displacement of Eagle River. I experienced several things in all of those capacities that I just mentioned on that day. The one that obviously strikes the most is my son at Greening. Out of all seven of my children, when I got my children home, he was the most traumatized. He was traumatized because he was not safe. He was not safe in the building because there was an earthquake. I would never, ever send my children back to Greening unless it was a brand-new school, and I might even add on a different piece of land. It is not safe. And I know that it's not safe because the teachers are telling us that it's not safe. I have seen pictures of this building, that by the way, is currently still affected by the aftershocks. The roof is still affected, it sinks down in the gymnasium. So my question is to you, and my pleading is that you please, please, come out and talk to us. Because the thing that I think is the most frustrating, between my opinion, the gentleman sitting next to me, that we both could concur, is that we keep reading in the newspaper and seeing on the news, everything's fine, they're doing great, Greening and Chugiak High School is doing great. My high schooler is deathly allergic to tree nuts, she has to have an EpiPen with her at all times. But because there's no room at Chugiak High School, because of the way that they've had to maneuver it, because they have combined seventh through eighth, and with the ninth through twelfth, and trying to make it as appropriate as possible, they can no longer, or they will soon no longer, to be able to carry backpacks with them. So we have to get her a special-approved bag to carry her EpiPen. But then they all, the children who don't have food allergies, have to go to their lockers and get their heavy books, they don't have time to do this. My daughter's gymnastics team, she did not join this year because they were displaced, because they didn't have a gym, because the Greening needed that gym. So logistics are not okay, morale is not okay. I have heard it from their voice, they are not okay over there. The biggest concern for me is that we are going to demoralize our teachers. We need to lift them up, they have sacrificed so much for us. So I plead for you to take the time to go out to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And your name, sir?
Hi, I'm Sean, Sean Price, and my mother's a teacher, and she's been working in the district for not very long, but plenty long enough, and she works on base. Anyways, I am a student at Chugiak High School, and it's a hard situation because there was a big tragedy, and a school got displaced, and it didn't have anywhere to go, and we had enough room to take it on. Now then, that there is room still for another, like, not another school, we have to, so, oh my gosh. It's not equitable, because I'm at a small school, even though we're a full school, I'm at a small school, like, we don't offer a lot of electives, we're at minimal choice. I couldn't, I can't take a creative writing class, I can't do all these things that I wish I could do, and so many other things are getting shut off, like the gymnastics team, and so many other things that you just can't really do because we don't have an aux gym anymore. We're only to one gymnasium, and there's a lot of other small elements, we don't have bells, there's no bells between class periods. We're having larger class sizes, and like Dr. Bishop brought up earlier when she was doing her presentation, back in, or two thousand and five, when the school was made, it was made because Chugiak was overcrowded, but since then, we have initialized a middle-college program and a KCC program, so an overcrowding wouldn't be that big of an issue because we have those extra programs to take students out of the school itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jen Strickland. That's J-E-N-S-T-R-I-C-L-A-N-D. And I also am a resident of Eagle River. I have a son that graduated from Chugiak last year and a sophomore at Chugiak this year. I think everybody that's spoken before me has been eloquent, and I don't want to repeat a lot of their points, but I do want to bring up a few points that people may not be aware. Obviously, Chugiak has the capacity to take both schools, because in a matter of days, they took in an entire middle school. My son was in choir, we had an exceptional choir teacher, Mr. Lang. A lot of our specialty teachers already go back and forth between the two schools because there's not enough students to support the one. So when my son would have choir practices, it would be the Chugiak Eagle River Choir, and that teacher would go back and forth. There are a lot of ways that these schools are already combined that people aren't even mentioning. I think it's important that junior high students be protected, but I also think that, not to be politically incorrect, but it's a risk to high schoolers to have middle school students in their school, too. When there's unexpected consequences between middle schoolers and high schoolers, it's not just damaging to the middle schooler, it's damaging to the high schooler also. And I think we need to protect both groups. The third thing I would say is everybody's heard about the danger regarding Grooning, Greening, and I just hope that if you can't vote no, can you just amend the portion that would require the Eagle River part, so that you could move forward and give Aquarian, who's obviously, gosh, look at them, so enthusiastic, their opportunity to move forward without having us hold anybody up, but let our community have its say and figure out its problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak? Do I have anyone else that would like to speak?
Which faction issues?
Whichever one you want. You state your name and spell it, please.
So I'm Noah Frost, N-O-A-H, and Frost, as you would expect, F-R-O-S-T.
Thank you. And you can begin.
So I go to Chugiak, and I'm experiencing the whole, I wasn't at Chugiak last year, I was abroad on exchange to South Africa, but now coming back and totally seeing this new experience, and seeing the complete difference of what after the earthquake, because I wasn't there, I wasn't present during the earthquake and what happened, but I hear a lot of things about it and see how it affects the school. Now, like my buddy Sean said, with the school is, there is a lot of things that are keeping students out of it, like the community college, the KCC, which I currently go to, and that just kind of alleviates and brings students out of it. And so here's another thing about the two schools. I haven't seen any, just talking or any way the students are, I'm talking about the Groening and the Chugiak students are interacting at all. I remember helping out one of my friends, his father was just dropping off some cargo at the school, the Groening section, and as soon as I walked in this doorframe, I couldn't practically even walk in the doorframe, because there was a teacher instantly stopping, like, nope, you can't, this is a Groening section, high school teacher, high school students are not allowed here. I was like, okay, understandable. So with this, I feel like the Groening knows what it's doing, and I've seen that, like, we don't really, our periods are separated in such ways where we don't really see each other. The only time I see Groening students in a day is during my anatomy class when they're passing it, and it's not bothering us at all, we're continuing our work. And with the maintenance of the other school and thinking if it's safe or not, I wouldn't rely on a school or just to fix what's already broken. At South, in South Africa, I witnessed the tragedy of, the bridge collapsed, and it did kill three people and hurt 27. That was caused to lack of maintenance, and of course, we're going to be focusing on maintenance, but can you really trust a building that's built on broken ends and foundation that's not stable? So I would say yes, let's rebuild and start anew, and prep for what's going to happen. And we know, like, we know that there's earthquakes like this can happen, we've seen it way, way in the past and recently. So I say, let's build a new school, let's learn from this past event, and let's rebuild like we always have. That's all.
Thank you, sir. And if you could state your name and spell it, please?
My name is Mark Wang, I'm a student at Chugiak High School, wait, should I start talking now, or?
Yeah, you can start.
I'm a student at Chugiak High School, and I most, a lot of things have been said, and, but most of all, what I want to say is that I think that the, all of you and everyone who's part of the process of making these decisions needs to be more involved, and come talk to students and teachers and administrators and such in the Chugiak Eagle River area. The only reason that I knew that I should be here in order to know about what's going on with this process is from my mom's Facebook, and I don't think that if that's how I have to understand, be informed about, like, when meetings, like, when these bond proposals and things, I don't think that's doing enough to involve with the actual schools that, and the kids, and the teachers and such that are being affected. I think that it just needs to be talked with the, communicated with the people that are being affected by these decisions more than it is.
Thank you. And if you could state your name and spell it, please?
Lily Durkey, L-I-L-Y-D-U-R-K-E.
And you can begin.
So I'm a senior at Chugiak High School, I've been, I've lived in Eagle River most of my life, I went to both Eagle River Elementary and Groening, so it's pretty shocking to see, you know, both my schools, you know, get destroyed in the earthquake. I with my, I agree with my friend Noah, you know, the middle-schoolers, they were, it was kind of like, oh, you know, middle-schoolers are high school at first, but we've adjusted to them, you know, and it's not that bad, but I think it would be best for our schools to combine, we could have a lot more programs, we could have more activities, and I think it would be good. I mean, I'm a senior this year, so I guess it doesn't really matter, you know, in the long run for me, but I think for the future, I think it'd be better to combine, and I think it'd be good not to go back and, you know, for Greening to have a new, you know, go to Eagle River, because I went to Greening and there were, you know, it was falling apart when I was going there, you know, I remember having a few issues and stuff. So I think, I think it'd be good to let Eagle River, or Greening go into Eagle River and Chugiak and Eagle River to combine. I think it'd be the best option as a student that's gone to all the, both schools, so.
Thank you. Are those for me? That would be me. You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Gage. Hello, my name is Gage, I'm in fifth grade right now, currently. I'm building bird boxes to help with my school roof. My goal is to build 20. Make that 200.
I can't buy 200.
I'm just trying to do my part, and with the help of you with your part, I can do my part, and we can get this done. But yeah, it really, yeah, it's a good school, it has the, even though it costs like a ticket, I don't know, or something, to get in it, but there's something unique about it. Needs to be kept for at least five more years. That's it.
All right. And, and thank you for my birdhouse. All right, are we ready to let the board discuss, or is there more testimony? Okay, I'm going to open it up for board discussion at this time. I know we have several amendments, Mr. Donnelly, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a substitute amendment I'd offered to facilitate debate. It's been very challenging, there's so many elements to this that I, I tried to put something forward that would facilitate us a path forward with the complexity that we're faced with. So it would be this version 211-1919, but with the, with the script amendments to it, and I would have one typographical correction, would be an item six, the Aquarian would be 6.5 million, and that would be for the roof and building preservation projects, and then I would not offer paragraph seven at this time, I think we could deal with that as a separate issue more appropriately.
One at a time, so Katie can get them, yeah.
So paragraph six, the amount would be 6.5 million, and I would not include paragraph seven. If there was a second, I'd speak to it.
For the purpose of discussion, I will offer a second.
Let's let Katie get it down, so we know what we're looking at.
I guess just a point of clarification, there are nine things that have been typed up, are we being asked to consider all nine as one?
Yes, it's a substitute amendment. Yeah, at the top, it's a substitute motion for the present amendment before us, and I would speak to it and explain it.
No, it's second.
It's already been second, but thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Donnelly.
So what this would do is to create first a, a bond that's exclusively earthquake-related repairs, of all the earthquake-related repairs that are currently on the proposal before us, with the exception, the change of that would be, there's 15.4 million for Greening projects that aren't earthquake-related, and would place those into a second bond. The second bond would be non-earthquake-related projects, a total of about 57,900,000, and that is, between those two bonds, that is the retired debt service for 2020 and 20, 2020 and 2021. So we would be targeting for this next year, two years of debt service going out. And if that was to be adopted by the board, I have a separate motion that would be made after that, that it's the sense of the board that the, both the earthquake and earthquake, non-earthquake bonds, if they were passed by the public, the board wouldn't come back and ask for more money next year, because we'd be utilizing the retirement for two years in one year, if the voters approved both of those. Then it would go on to add the current identified prioritized security projects that are currently on three, three-year, year three of the six-year plan, that's 9,326,000, and the priority security projects from year five on this six-year plan, that's $340,000. And it would add the, to the non-earthquake bond, 6.5 million for Aquarian roof and building preservation projects. It would amend the language identifying the Inlet View Elementary project and replace the current replacement design terminology with remodel design, and replace the project description with "design funding to remodel Inlet View Elementary School on the existing site." That would change the focus of the design work from a total tear-down replacement school to looking at what redesign and what renovations would make sense. And that process would occur over the next couple of years, that those proposals could be put together, and then the board would be looking at, if the board chose to do so, the actual funding of that in 2022. And it would add, so the, so the total amounts of the two bonds together is what my calculation of the bond retirement for 2020 and 2021 is about 111,965,000, and the first bond would be for 57,900,000, and the second bond would be for 57, well, yeah, the second bond would be for 57,900, and the first bond would be the 54,036,000. So what this does is it sets, allows the voters to vote separately on any earthquake repairs, just puts them off as a separate proposal. Now, the Alaska, the Anchorage School District has, has a history of having multiple bonds many times before, we've broken out big questions on separate bonds in the past, sometimes it takes a couple tries for the voters to go along, like with the high school, that's happened. Here we have a real distinct circumstance, we have a natural disaster we're faced with addressing, and this would allow the voters, and I think there's tremendous support out there in the community for addressing the earthquake issues, to address, to vote on those separately, and then to consider a separate bond that has all these deferred maintenance needs and school security needs that have been backed up for years. We have a huge amount of outstanding deferred maintenance, this would keep that process going of addressing those deferred maintenance, because we'd be pulling projects right off the list, the priority list, with the exception of the money for Aquarian, which we have testimony now from the district that the roof project is number two on the overall priority list, so it makes sense to do some additional things that go with the roof at this time also, that are related to the construction of the roof. So that, and then we all know that we've got serious concerns with some of our schools, especially our elementary schools, with how they're constructed from a security point of view, to protect our children from outside threats to them while they're at school, and this would get those projects underway. I want to thank the voters for doing some of this, and the last bond was successfully adopted, and these are the remaining projects that the school district has identified, what we, we really need to do to harden our schools from outside threats. So that's the proposal. If it was adopted at this time, then it would be for the board as a main motion, and available for any additional amendments that board members wanted to utilize. So the motion wouldn't adopt it, it would do a substitute, it would replace the existing motion before us, which would facilitate individual further amendments that any board member wanted to make.
Just as a side note, if I may, the system is not going to take it that way, so it's going to take me a minute to get it all put together.
Yes, Mr. Hallman.
I wanted to speak to the idea about having two bonds, because there was a lot of discussion about it at our last meeting. And initially, I did not really favor the idea. I do see value in putting everything together for a number of reasons, but I also came to see the fact that the public looks at the earthquake repair as a very separate thing than remodeling or upgrading or the, doing the other kind of work that we're talking about. And the earthquake repair is a, it has a different timeline, in that we really have to either address it or lose the opportunity for reimbursement or other items like that. I don't think we ought to pause on that. I, I think that we, that we need to put that as a separate package, and I think we need to just have that kind of material in it for the public to be able to choose that without also having to choose a lot of other projects. The other bond, I think we, that has a number of upgrades and manuals and, and different items on it, we're going to have to go out and sell in the traditional way that we have to go out and convince people to vote for a bond. And I do think it's fair to the public to offer up the earthquake repair as a separate thing for them to look at, and then also look at the improvements to the district as something to whether or not we can afford. I think most of us feel like it's a good idea, there's no question to us, but we have to be able to go out and explain that to the public and, and get their approval in order to be able to do it. So I, I feel like the earthquake repair is going to happen, I think the, there's just been the, the mood from the public at community council meetings and other places, that they appreciate what the district's done. other places that they appreciate what the district's done, and they want those things fixed for safety reasons. The other ones are always much more subject to debate. I do want to comment on some of the testimony to the Eagle River folks and Chigayac and Eagle River folks. We did make a decision to rebuild greening back in the spring. And it was public, it was done here. I don't know that it occurred to anyone to hold hearings about consolidation at that point, but the idea of closing Eagle River as a high school and moving it to Chigayac has come up years back. At the time, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I was attending the meetings and watching, I never heard any particular support for it. And there definitely was backlash from the Eagle River High School community. And I think if it had been advertised that we were going to really discuss that as something tonight, we would have heard a lot more balanced testimony. I appreciate the fact that it does seem very incited tonight. But I do think it's because people that wanted to object showed up, and other people did not realize that it was going to really be discussed that much. I do think at the time, back in the spring, our feeling was we were going to make the Eagle River community whole again. We weren't going to use the earthquake as an excuse to close one of your schools and alter things significantly, but that when we looked at whether or not greening could be repaired, and I do want to make clear that all of us feel very confident that the repairs are going to make it a safe building. These aren't patches. These are reworkings, and these are seismic upgrades, as well as the proposed improvements to the interior of the school as well. We'll make it as safe as any building can be made safe again in the Anchorage School District. Now, if you're closer to the epicenter of a major earthquake, that has consequences, and unfortunately, we cannot control that. But I do want people to understand that my feeling is we have been responsive in that we did not hear an outcry to consolidate the buildings. But we did want to make you whole again in the schools that you were in. And unfortunately, it does have a temporary consequence of people being crowded and buildings having to alter what they would like to do for the duration of getting it done. But I don't want people to think we didn't hear you tonight, we absolutely do. If we need to, we can start those conversations. But I feel bound to vote yes on the repair, on moving the bonds for the earthquake repair of those buildings, because that has been our announced intention for a long time. If we were going to take the step of closing Eagle River High School, I'm going to estimate that it would take us at least six months to talk to the communities, gather input from everybody, give everyone a chance to weigh in on that before we would take an action like that. It would never be something we would do in the course of one meeting or something along those lines. It is a big decision that impacts thousands of people. So I do appreciate folks coming to speak on that tonight, but I don't see us being able to change direction and not fund repairing that building tonight. I think that's the summation. Other thing I would add is I do support the dry safe warm upgrade to Aquarian. There are complications about equity in that with our other charter schools. It's also the case that it's a unique situation, unlike any other charter school. We are about to approach the wettest winter we've ever had by everybody's forecast. I think it's raining outside right now. And it's going to be 40 degrees at the end of November tomorrow. They need a roof. And it makes complete sense to go ahead and do these other repairs at the same time that we are reworking the whole roof. So I do support most of the things in the substitute amendment, or substitute motion, but we'll argue about some other points a little bit later. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell.
So I think this amendment is interesting for many of the reasons that Mr. Holloman stated. I guess I'm curious, maybe Mr. Roth can talk to... If we do this, I want to make sure that what's on the earthquake bond really is earthquake only. So I'm just wondering if, what are... I'm trying to, sorry. Eagle River Elementary School, we know that there are some educational improvement projects there as well. And the other earthquake recovery projects, Bartlett East, King Tech, all of those other schools, are there any educational improvement dollars there?
Through the president to Member Mitchell. So the projects that you reference are the schools that the district did contract to have A&amp;E firms to go in and do more detailed evaluations, and those numbers that you see are specific to earthquake repair?
Any other discussion? Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of questions relative to the prioritized security projects for the staff. They were on the original for 2022. And I know we talked a little bit about it last time, but is it... I guess my question is, if we had it, if in the staff's judgment, 2022 was the place that you put it, is there a more pressing need to move those things forward to year one? I mean, I get making our schools safe, but it wasn't in year one, based on your recommendations.
So through the board president to Member Bellamy. So just a couple of things on the security projects. As you know, the school board did approve last year. In fact, the board added a number of security projects to the bond which the public did pass. So there's a number of them. So while we would say, you know, these are necessary, in terms of the most timely, what the staff assessed to me the most timely needs were on that initial push of security projects. So these, while they're still important, you know, we don't consider them quite as timely as the other ones. And the other factor I would just offer to you, you know, these are, I mean, they're individual, smaller projects that even if they come forward, it's not necessarily going to accelerate the timeline for their completion, because, you know, as you can see, we have a number of other specific projects, you know, that we're having to deal with as well.
Okay. Thank you. And, oh, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Hildy.
Thank you. I said last time that I thought it was an interesting idea to split the bond so that you can effectively communicate what the cost of the earthquake is. I don't think this is quite where I want to see. This is a very large bond package. I want to go to multi-year bonds, that's something I support. I don't think we've done enough to prepare our community for that. And I don't know that splitting it into two is the way to present our first multi-year I like the original bond, but to Member Donnelly's point where it wouldn't be a multi-year, there would be those safety upgrades in year two, not putting those off later, a smaller bond, so that the math works out, year one and year two bonds, our taxes are held even. But we do have a greater need with the earthquake to address it this year. I've been very consistent in saying that I won't support adding Aquarian to the bond absent a written agreement on how we're going to capture investment into that facility. If we'd had investment by the APC into that facility through rent, long before that rent payment, you know, changed at the state level, we would have money to pay for these things. So this wouldn't be an issue. I joined, you know, ran for the school board for long-term financial planning. We've been on notice for this for 10 years. You know, this board had the exact same discussion in 2009. So that's not to fault anybody here today, nobody, you know, it's just what happened, but we have to deal with it. The equity issue among charter schools is significant. And the consequences of process, I don't think we can minimize those. If this went forward today, what's going to happen next year? What is the process for charter schools getting on the bond? I'm fine with that happening. I have ideas for my own kid's school. The first thing I did when my kids started there was look at building plans and started picking out spots where I wanted a, let's call it a multipurpose room, with band hall features. You know, there are other issues to consider beyond the very immediate need for Aquarian to have a warm, safe building. Of course, we want all our students in that. But in our ad hoc committee, we talked about other avenues forward. Those are all still available. So that I wouldn't be able to support in this substitution motion. Really, just looking at the original motion is where I'm leaning right now, but with an understanding that year two would look different.
Member Hildy, may I ask a question? Are you, so are you saying bond this year and bond next year, or bond now and not for two years?
Yes.
So last time, last time we met, I said I would support a year-three, multi-year bond, but year one would just be as the administration recommended. And year two would be a smaller bond, bumping some of those deferred maintenance, you know, our typical deferred maintenance, moving those up to year two, such that year one and year two averaged out to holding taxes even, you know, around 50 million. And Member Donnelly has the numbers already calculated, so about 111 over two years. So that also gives us the opportunity to look to see if any FEMA reimbursements have come in, then we could adjust to see if... So if FEMA reimburses some money for us, we can apply that to other deferred maintenance, and then we would reduce the bond at year two. We don't know when that number comes in, but it just at least affords us the opportunity to consider that calculation.
Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have another question for staff. And that question has to do with... I thought we asked for some, some kind of history around two bonds, having multiple bonds in a year. And did I miss it in the report? It's in the board connect.
Yeah.
Okay. So I missed that, I'm sorry. So can somebody just paraphrase for me what that is, please?
Madam President, I'll see if Mr. Anderson can pull it up. He found the information for us and reported it in the board connect prior to leaving last week, so.
If you give me 10 seconds while you continue talking...
Is there another question? And then we can come back to this one?
Actually, I can talk about another subject while you do that. I'm just, I need that, I need to know that, because I don't think splitting the bonds is going to be, is the way for us to go. I mean, right now, we've got earthquake versus non-earthquake, we've got charter versus traditional. It seems to me we're just, and I know those are facts of life, but it just seems to me we're just dividing ourselves and dividing ourselves. And these are all of our kids, and I know we know that. So I just, I can support parts of this substitute motion, but the biggest, it's based on two bonds, and that I won't be going along with two bonds. But I would like to look at the original bond as the staff recommended and make some suggestions to that.
So I think Mr. Anderson is still looking, that's okay. Mr. Holloman.
Yeah, I would speak to one other thing about one bond versus two bonds. If we were looking at two bonds and say one was South Anchorage and one was Eagle River, I would absolutely agree with you that that would not be a good way to go forward at all. I do think the earthquake repair stuff is critical, that if we go forward with one bond that's approaching $100 million, we have to consider what our plan will be if it fails. And if the earthquake repair bonds fail, I don't know what your Plan B is. I don't know that there is a Plan B for that. I think there's strong public support for it. I think most of Anchorage wants that fixed, and it's a solid base hit in a relatively small bond by itself, and we should allow the public to express that. The other bond has things that you could say are optional. I don't really feel they are, I feel they're fairly urgent. But the truth is, we still have ways forward to make those things happen, even if they fail on a bond. But the earthquake stuff in particular is kind of timely, particularly if we want to make it happen and collect contributions from FEMA or the state to help defray the cost. I think the public would appreciate the ability to make their choices very clear on this. And to me, it's not a situation that divides the district. It's more categories of bonds, and it's about categories of what the public feels. And that, to me, makes it acceptable to offer it up as two packages.
Ms. Bellamy.
Jim, I found it. Thank you.
Ms. Vakalis.
I hear what you say when you're talking about, Member Holloman, about a bond not being, you know, south side versus north side or something like that. But when you look at the whole of the earthquake bond, it does primarily affect Eagle River, and that can become a part of the discussion if it is separate and separated out. Yes, that's where the epicenter was, that's where we got hit the hardest and the most damages. But we already have an ongoing, you know, conversation out there between Eagle River and Anchorage proper that doesn't even have to do with this, that's already, you know, making divisive waves. And so I don't, I too am opposed to separating it out this way, even though I understand the spirit and the intent of it, I would be opposed to separating it out. I'm also quite opposed, just a bond package, one or two of this magnitude and this size, I think will just create a lot of sticker shock. I worry about the capacity of the administration to be able to handle it. Right now, we, the past, you know, four or five years, we've been doing, you know, balancing out our bond debt versus, you know, new bond indebtedness, and staff has been able to flow with it. But right now, you tack on this kind of dollars, and it is going to increase staff in the wake of, you know, all the other shortfalls, you know, and budget funding cuts, you know, that, you know, we're already grappling with. And I understand why that can be paid for through bonds and stuff like that, but it just, it doesn't sit right, and it doesn't feel right. The size of it, I think, will be a problem. And, you know, much like Member Hildy, I am opposed to item number six, you know, with Aquarian. I think there are other options that we need to discuss as a board, you know, that do need to be a part of the conversation before we jump straight to a bond. Equity is an issue. I remember when RILCA was told they weren't going to be able to potentially re-sign another lease because it did not have an elevator, and so they had to go a completely different route. And so coming in this way, you know, after everything that's happened, there is a huge equity issue that needs to be, you know, top of mind. So I recognize what you're trying to do, and I understand the spirit, and, you know, with a lot of it, but I'm not with all of it. And so if the whole thing really is to, you know, up or down this as it is right now, I'm not going to be able to support it. I think I would much rather go back, maybe like to, Member Hildy and Member Bellamy, to go back to the original and, you know, try and make some adjustments on the original packages proposed by the administration.
Any other discussion? Ms. Mitchell?
Well, I just, I guess, I don't know if my comments are appropriate now, or if we should decide whether we want to go with one bond or two bonds, but a couple of things. I am very concerned about putting off more deferred maintenance. And in terms of capacity, I hear what you're saying, but if we have more projects, then we have money in those projects for the overhead for management, and we may have to hire some more people to do that. I am, you know, Inlet View has been a school that we have said for years needs addressing, and I think we, I don't want to kick it down the road. I want to see it on the bond this year. And as far as Aquarian goes, I guess I'd like to hear Dr. Bishop's perspective on it. But to me, yes, there are some equity issues with the other charter schools, as Mr. Holloman said. I don't, you know, the situation with RILCA was a little different. They had a dry and safe place to be in the church that they were renting from, and this is a little bit of a different situation. So I guess I wouldn't punish them right now. I mean, I hear what everybody's saying about that situation, and I think there are some issues we need to address, but in my mind, if we can, I support what Dave had... I, I support what Dave has, Mr. Donnelly has in here, because it is going to give us another 20 years in that school, and it seems to be working for that community. So, but I would very, I'd be interested to hear what Dr. Bishop's perspective on that is.
I'd like to hear board members first, and then we can have Dr. Bishop speak. Doctor, Doctor, Mr. Donnelly?
Just a procedural thing. As a substitute motion, if this was to pass, then it would become the main motion before us and be available for amendment. So we could debate individual items on it and entertain amendments to modify it, because it, it won't be like it's adopted by the board, it'll become the main motion instead of the current motion. And I really think the current motion is really difficult to figure out. I mean, because we've got the mix of the earthquake matters with other matters, we've got debate over whether those other things are appropriate to be mixed in with earthquake. I was trying to make it, I was trying to pull together the things I've heard from other people and things that I felt were important, and try to get a main motion before us that was more amenable to the kind of decision-making that's really tough to do as a board with a, a single element before us. So it wouldn't be the, if it passed, it wouldn't be, well, that's what we've done. It would simply become the main motion, which we could modify.
Ms. Bellamy, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Ms. Hildy?
I just, I find it easier to modify the original motion. I think we'll have to make less changes to the original motion.
So I, I have a couple of comments, and that is, I am concerned about the bond, because we do know that the governor is looking at taking away the other 50% of the bond debt reimbursement, which will be an issue when we have to go out to sell these bonds. I have to say that I do, my, my, my commitment to myself is always to look at what's best for our kids, no matter what that may be. How does it affect our children and what's best for them? And that has always been my basis on all my decisions. However, I'm going to say that I've been, and I apologize for this, but I've been a little disappointed in Aquarian and their planning process and what they brought forward. It's not that I don't support this, but I really haven't seen a long-term plan from your board that addresses, I mean, what happens if you don't have that building tomorrow? I, I, I expected more, I guess, from a board than saying, you know, let's put it on the bond or the district just pay for it. So it doesn't mean that I'm not in support of this, it just means that I wish there had been more thought from the board when, when you came to our ad hoc committee. And I'm just going to be honest in saying that, I'm very upfront and direct. So I am concerned about this. The other thing with greening is, when we put forth that bond, there are deficiencies with greening. We knew there were deficiencies with greening, and one of the things we discussed was, if we were going to do this bond money, we were going to include those deficiencies, because that was something, that was like top on our list. And they have been suffering for a long time with those deficiencies. And so I do believe that that was part of the reason that we put those things in with those earthquake repairs, is to kind of fulfill, fulfill a commitment to make sure that that building was as whole as possible. So those are my concerns with this. I probably, as it's written, Mr. Donnelly, I wouldn't support it. There would be changes. Ms. Hildy?
I'll just add, regarding the roof replacement for Aquarian, even if it is on a bond, that doesn't address this winter, if it is a rainy winter. So there still is not a financial situation, you know, clarity on what would happen this winter, whether the bond passes or not. If the bond fails, there isn't a clear plan for what happens then either.
So is there any more discussion? Mrs. Mitchell?
So I, I hear what you're saying about Aquarian. I mean, I definitely, you know, there, there are a lot of issues around the whole charter school thing in general. But I guess, having heard a little bit more about what's gone on the last few years, and that a school board member apparently four years ago or five years ago met with them and said, we're going to get you, you know, they, that year, they were on the CIP, and I think that they didn't realize they were no longer on it. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I think there was some miscommunication on the part of that board at that time as well, in terms of where things stood with, with that facility, so.
If there's no other discussion, is the board ready to vote? And this would be, oh, yes, sorry, Sophia.
So I just wanted to, I'm speaking from a student perspective, but I just wanted to add a comment. I've spoken to parents, I've spoken to students, I've spoken to staff members and community members, and even community members who don't have children in ASD schools, and also hearing the testimonies tonight, it seems to me that there needs to be more discussion with the community on this subject. And it's not like, I don't think, I don't think it takes six months, honestly, to, to make that happen. I think it's as simple as organizing community events with those schools, and I don't know, I just think the discussion has kind of strayed from that, and so I think that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. So I, I have one question. If we were to allocate funds out of our reserves for a roof for 2.8 million, when would that happen?
That would be approximately 0.5% of the fund balance, and that's really a, a school board discussion.
But I mean, when, it, I'm, I'm just saying if, when would the roof go into place? Would that be?
So, so Madam President, you know, what, what I would, you know, just to give you an, an honest assessment on this, based on the timing, so, and, and, and we've had these conversations before, so this is a, you know, this is an engineered solution. So it would require the district through fair competition to, to solicit for a, an architectural firm to do the design, and that takes a bit to do the solicitation, do the design. I, I think it is unrealistic to believe that we could even begin on this roof in the following academic year, this would be 2021, for, for work in completion over the course of one summer.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Do we have a, I think we have the motion before us. Would a board member like to read that, or can you read it on your own?
I don't know.
Okay, go ahead.
The motion you're voting on is to approve ASD memorandum number 039, a substitute motion. For all, one, all earthquake-related projects except non-earthquake-related upgrades to greening in a separate bond. Two, separate bond for non-earthquake-related projects totaling $59,900,000. Replace the amount, increase, let me just read it up here. Separate bond for non-earthquake-related projects totaling $57,900,000. Three, place greening non-earthquake-related projects, $15.4 million into second, non-earthquake projects bond. Four, prioritize security projects, $9.326 million from year three, 2022, to year one, 2020, in the separate non-earthquake bond. Five, prioritize security projects, $340,000 from year five, 2022, to year one, 2020, in the non-earthquake bond. Six, add to non-earthquake bond, $6.8 million for Aquarian roof and building preservation projects. Eight, amend language to Inlet View Elementary School project to replace, replacement design with remodel design, and replace project description with design funding to remodel Inlet View Elementary School on the existing site. Nine, add balance of non-earthquake bond for planning, design, and construction of deferred requirement projects as on current deferred maintenance priority list.
Okay. And actually, that on the Aquarian is six, number six is 6.5. Right. Okay. All right, student vote?
No.
Board members, please vote. I can't see the whole screen, Mike, or somebody?
It's here, start.
Oh. We have three ayes and four nays, so that substitute does not pass. So we're going to go back to the original proposal, and are there any amendments to the original proposal? Mr. Holloman?
Yes, I presented to Katie earlier an amendment to add 6.8 million for the Aquarian safe, safe, dry, warm, warm, safe, dry fixes.
Mr. Holloman, did you want to use the capital improvement language?
Capital improvement language, thank you.
No, I didn't hear it. Who said second? Okay, thank you. Ms. Bellamy? Right, so this is amendment to the main motion, yes. Andy, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Simply that, that this has some urgency to it. We have a building that's leaking into the envelope. I, I think at the moment, the students are safe. I don't think it's a, it's a imminent danger. But especially if we're talking about not coming back next year for additional bond money, that puts it off to a, a very long-term problem. I think we need to make the commitment. They're ASD students, they're in an ASD building. I absolutely do think the board needs to sit down and have the discussion about what is equitable for charters. But unfortunately, the responsibility for making sure that our students are in suitable buildings for education falls to us. And there may have been miscommunications, or there may have been unplanned delays or different things, but ultimately, this board is the one that has the ability and the authority to make these changes happen. So I, I think we need to deal with that, and, and we need to deal with the unanswered question about what we do with charter schools that become institutions. We've, we have some charters that you can no longer say are experiments, they're no longer iffy, they have become a part of the district, and they show every sign of, of being here for the long term. But we've never really spoken to, to whether or not we treat them differently, or, or taken a look at the funding. And unfortunately, we have statute from the legislature that interferes with what charters can choose to spend their money on, that interferes with what we can charge them for. And we just have, unfortunately, we just have to live with that. In the meantime, we have a building that's wet, we have a climate that's suddenly getting much wetter. We need to address this and fix this, and we need to solve our differences at a later time, after this has been taken care of.
Ms. Hildy?
I understand the need for students to be in, the need for students to be in safe, dry buildings. There's no dispute by anyone on this board for that. This amendment does not resolve the immediate needs of Aquarian. This winter is not addressed by this bond. There is no plan for that, there is no, the administration's working for the last year and a half to figure that out, and there hasn't been a resolution to that. The responsibility is on the APC to, we contract out our, really our authority to decide how those kids learn, where they learn. So the burden, if you will, is on the APC to be coming to the administration to say, we want to be here, here's what we need to do. The, you know, if it was a, a business entity, you know, kind of not really wonderful parents doing it, but just kind of a, you know, those for-profit kind of things, we would have very high expectations for managing and planning and, and communicating what's going to happen. It is confusing with charter schools. Parents just enter the lottery. They don't say, I want this school or that, because it's an alternative. I mean, I, you know, we used to get really confused on all those different programs. It's not a criticism of anybody, but there is a way that charters work. There is a contract that we have to honor. If there's going to be a change to it, there needs to be a written agreement, there needs to be clarity, there needs to be a plan for this winter and ongoing. Is this board going to continue to invest in a building that we chose not to invest in when Northern Lights moved out of there? We need to make that decision. And it, and it should have happened a long time ago, and it's unfortunate that this is where we are. It's not fair to, most importantly, to kids, but it's, it's where we're at. But this amendment doesn't address all the needs that we've heard communicated.
Ms. Mitchell?
So I had mentioned earlier, I'd love to hear the superintendent's perspective on this, so I don't know if that's appropriate at this time or not.
Thank you. I, what is shared is a collective, you know, report from, from the work being done that's been over time. But I, I really just want to share that it's, whatever happens, especially in this next winter, we're responsible anyway. And so, for me, for the people in that building, it's prudent to, first and foremost, get a new roof. There was testimony today, it's kind of like the book, when you give a mouse a cookie, then he's going to want a glass of, you know, a milk, and then he wants a glass of milk, he's going to, you know, have to do something else. And, and that's absolutely true, you're dealing with an old building. So, you know, sure, it needs new windows, it needs new this, it needs new this, but the first and foremost priority is a roof, because then we can protect the rest of the building. The envelope is the most important right now. So I would, I would pay for it, I would get it taken care of. I guess the discussion is about, do we take it out of fund balance, get it taken care of, take care of that building that we own, and do we put it on a bond? To me, we just gotta, we have to get a new roof to start. We have to get closer to an agreement about how the building tenant improvements will continue, that's, that's for sure. But at the end of the day, they're our kids and our staff. And I have been researching this and researching, just like I went back 20 years on Tugak Eagle River, I've gone back 20 years on this as well to understand, because I've only been in the district the start of my fourth year. And the interesting thing is, is that the public process allows for reconsideration. A board 20 years ago made a decision, lots of things have changed. A, a school, you know, 20 years ago had made a decision, and with this world, we get new information and, and new outcomes. And it's a tough decision, because it does bring up the next thing about, well, what about the next charter school? And I would say, at that time, we're going to do the best we can with what we have, where we are. We're going to say, what are the needs? It absolutely is a contract. And so as people entered with a contract for charter schools, you go in with your eyes wide open, like, this is what we want, this is what we want to contract for you. So that's the beauty of charter schools, they're all different. And we'd have to look at them, you know, individually. Inlet View is also mentioned, and I'm just, because I asked to have the mic, I can take some, make some corrections. So again, I was the one who asked Inlet View to be moved forward because of, I think, eight-plus years being pushed off. The idea to build up came from the fact that they want to build the building for 300, not 500, and through deed regulations, so everyone knows, you can only build a building through public bond for students who are unhoused. There are 300 students that live in the area of Inlet View. There happen to be almost 260 that attend the school. There are more students who choose to elect to go to a different school than they are taking in on. So some of the facts are not really actual, I mean, they're not articulated well. And I know that there's, social media has to do with this, there was a letter going out. Point is, it's, the new facility was for 300, and it could be flat like it is, it could grow, grow up, it would depend on what the community wanted, but the reason it was going grow up, it would depend on what the community wanted, but the reason it was going up is because it's some of the smallest footprint of space. The recommendation by deed is to have 15 acres now for space around schools. We have Eagle River Elementary School is one of those. Aquarian, former Northern Lights, is one of those. They didn't reserve that space, and in thinking about the community, it was to not take away the playland, the playground, all the stuff around that community. That was the reason why they said, well, maybe you can build up. It doesn't have to be that way, though, but there was a reason why. It was actually to protect the neighborhood in the discussions. So, again, that was just made to, we have to come to the decision not to kick the can down the road anymore, and it's a tough decision with boards. And I'm telling you, at the end of the day, as the superintendent, things go bad, we're going to take care of it. They're kids, they're teachers, it's our community. How we pay for it is the struggling part. I don't have heartburn on either way, but I hope that we can, as a board, make a decision and move forward, because we'll just, we'll spin forever. And I know that didn't answer the question, but that's the superintendent's thought.
Ms. Fekales?
So, I think a lot of you guys remember from the last meeting, I think I've talked about where I kind of stand on this issue. In the last two weeks, there have been conversations with the administration and Aquarian, and there is, even through possible amendment by President Marsette, a different avenue to work with Aquarian that I think warrants at least a little bit of discussion as we're trying to vote on this one particular piece, because it is an option. I still firmly believe that there is an equity issue, and it's not just among charter schools, and what some of the other charter schools have had to do with their facilities. It is, Aquarian has the gift of the autonomy to make the decisions that they do, but it also bears the responsibility to make sure that they're looking at everything in a holistic way, not just the education component. I bet numbers of our elementary schools would love to have 96% of their ADM, you know, component allocated to their school, so that they could have, you know, some of the same outcomes and results. But that just isn't the case, because they are not charter schools, and this is a state statute that allows this. It's an equity issue across the system, not just with charter schools alone. I applaud what Aquarian is doing. They have a fantastic program, and I want to see the help. At this point, because of all the frustration, I believe more in probably President Marsette's motion of helping with the roof and finding a cost share, you know, as a cost share, you know, where there is a long-term program going forward, as opposed to a $6.5 million bond proposition that doesn't answer, you know, a lot of the other fiscal responsibilities that I think are inherent in being an APC, managing a budget the way that they are. And so I'm against this proposal as it is. I would be more interested in looking at the other option as a board, and I, you know, which we can, you know, work on now or later, but I would ask Star if she would speak, you know, to her, you know, motion, not to confuse the two, but to make sure that both options are being discussed, so that people know that there are options, not just one thing being put in front of us.
So I would speak to that, but unfortunately, we have to speak to the amendment. Yeah, so that's on the floor, and so I'm not able to do that. So what we are speaking to right now is Mr. Holloman's motion, and that is to move to add 6.8 million dollars for Aquarian capital improvements to the existing bond, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
It's a really unusual situation, because we have the bond motion before us, but we also have an alternative method of possibly financing the project at Aquarian, or a portion of the projects. So I'm going to attempt something here, it's a little unusual, but I'm going to move to amend the amendment before us, to instead of placing the 6.5 on the bond proposition, to have 2.8 million for the roof at Aquarian come from our reserve account. And I think it relates to what's before us, because it's kind of an either-or with the bond, and this provides an opportunity for people to vote that up or down before we proceed to the question of the bond.
Is, did you make that amendment to the motion, Member Donnelly?
Yeah, I moved that as an amendment to the amendment.
I will second it for discussion, and, can I speak?
Yes.
I'm open to that. I would rather it be a matching component, where instead of deciding what the number is, saying that we would match the APC's contribution to fixing the roofs, that there is some, I guess, assurance that we're not doing the, or make it subject to further negotiations. It could be that as well. But I'm not ready to commit to $3 million pulled, when I am going to have to find 240 million over the next six years across our entire district. Those are huge numbers, and it's not, it's not fair, so.
Mr. Holloman?
My understanding is, I mean, first of all, that the roof repair has to be done by the Aquarian School District, because it is an ASD building. We can't allow another entity to handle the contracting for that work. And my understanding is, by statute, we can't ask a charter in our building to pay for capital improvements. So my question would be, is what you're talking about wiggly doable? My understanding is it's not. And I, as frustrated as anybody else tonight, in that if there's an alternate method, I wish it'd come up a little bit sooner, but I don't see where there is one. And I do realize, when we pass this tonight, if we pass it, it doesn't mean something's going to happen immediately, but it does mean something will happen one day. And we've gone a long time with nothing happening at all. So I, again, I do understand that we're not going to solve anything this winter unless something dramatic happens, but I don't see another pathway that is allowed under statute. So I would say we're forced to do this or nothing.
Mr. Donnelly?
And I recognize Mr. Holloman's concern regarding the statute. I'd like to ask if the administration can give us some guidance of whether we could use our reserve balance to fund the Aquarian roof. And I agree with what you said, with the exception of, if the bond doesn't pass, then it's delayed another year.
Through the President to answer Member Donnelly's question, to let you know, both the district and Aquarian can use operational money to pay for capital. So whether it's the reserve of the district, or the personal reserve of Aquarian, both, it's all operational money, both can be used for that. To be able to put their own capital improvements, or the district putting capital improvements into place. Their budget is approved by their APC. Can I? Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
So if they use their operation funds to do it, could they hire their person to do it, and not incur the overhead and contingency and all that that the district is subject to?
Through the President to Member Mitchell, that's a great question, and the answer is no, because all the funds are public money taken. All of them are, come from taxpayer money, or oil revenue money, however. So they're all public monies, therefore, we're all public entities, and the public process has to go in for purchasing. We're government altogether.
So, I'm sorry, I, just to understand this a little bit more, the reason that Rilka and Winterberry didn't have to do that is because they weren't in a district-owned building? Or did they have the same overhead and contingency when they contracted with their builder, their developer, to build their buildings?
Through the President, it went through the same purchasing and agreement through our day whiting, so it had to go through and meet all procurement requirements. So, just to speak, I do have an amendment that is a little bit different than what's being proposed, so there is another amendment, I can't speak to it, because we have two amendments on the floor, but just to let you know that mine's a little different. So, any more, what we're going to speak to is the amendment to the amendment. Is there any more conversation on the amendment to the amendment? And the amendment to the amendment is to add 2.8 million dollars for Aquarian roof replacement from reserve funds.
I'd clarify to Mr. Donnelly.
Yeah. I actually never, yeah, thank you. I never got a chance to actually speak to the amendment, so I guess I'll do that now. This amendment has the advantage of not putting something with such public, amazing public support for, mixed in with other things, and I'm an advocate for separating, separating the issues. It has the advantage of not having to go through waiting for the vote to begin the process of the design and to get the project done, because in my visit to the school, it looks like it's got to be done right away. And I think that it's justifiable, even though it's a unique circumstance with it being a charter, from the point of view of just preservation of school district property. That's, that's what I just, I think we need to preserve that, those buildings there, that school, the building. And so by moving ahead with it in this format, we kind of cut through all the questionable, what may happen in the future, and get right to the issue, and that's preservation of this building, with a roof that works, and is, and as everybody agrees is needed. I completely recognize that there needs to be a long-term fix, and the uniqueness of this particular charter school creates a lot of questions about, we need a policy to deal with it. But we're also faced with a very immediate roof problem, and a problem with preserving that building, which we own. So that's why I think it's appropriate to break it out and just move forward with it in an expedited manner.
Yes, Mr. Holloman?
I'm looking back through notes, Alaska Statute 14.03.260, which lays out allocations to a charter. Part B says, "The program budget of a charter school is to be used for operating expenses of the educational program of the charter school, including purchasing textbooks, classroom materials, and instructional aids." And that's the part that led me to believe that a capital improvement wouldn't be appropriate. Rent obviously is, and of course, hidden within rent is capital expense. If we were a private land ward, we could do that. But there's also another statute, 14.03.255, that says a school district won't charge charters that, they will only charge them repair costs. So I'm still confused about whether or not it would be legal. The law seems to say pretty expressly operating expenses, which normally, things like a boiler or roof or whatnot, wouldn't, wouldn't be considered that, unless they were covered under annual rent.
Through the, I can have staff speak to that, but through the President, I've had experience where charters were on bonds for capital items that were approved by the state, and then I've had those very same similar capital items be paid for by the charter, and, you know, to have two of something, or two. So I, we could relook at it, but I, in my experience, in a prior school district, capital was purchased out of operational money, as well as through a bond. And, but we can get more specific, and maybe things have changed since my experience, but we didn't have any information that wouldn't allow this to occur.
I understand is this went into effect in 2014?
Correct. So there's, there's a question about the amendment to the amendment, though. Katie, you want to, because I'm not sure.
This is just, it seems to be a completely, it seems to be a completely separate amendment? It doesn't, I was just wondering if that is, is it point of order, is it amendment to amendment, or is it a substitute amendment?
It's essentially a substitute amendment, but it's on the same subject matter of funding for Aquarian.
So basically, it would replace what Mr. Holloman's, it would, it would replace what-
He would replace placing something on the bonds with just a straight-up pay for the roof from reserve funds, yeah.
So the amendment on the amendment we're voting on is to, instead of, and probably this isn't on here correctly, is to not have Aquarian on the bond, and to, the amendment is to put 2.8 million dollars for the Aquarian roof replacement, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so amendment to amendment is-
Ms. Hildy?
I just want to make sure, Katie, do you think you have it? So it's a substitution to Member Holloman's amendment?
Right.
And the board will vote on the substitution, and then we'll have to vote on that underlying amendment?
Yes.
But is it as stated-
As to allocate 2.8 million from the general, from the reserves for Aquarian roof repairs?
I just need clarification. So the amendment to the amendment to only put, does that, are we reducing the 2.8 from the 6.8? No. No, my, Mr. Donnelly, my understanding is that your amendment is to remove it from the bond, the 6.58, whatever it is, and to replace it with 2.8 million dollars for Aquarian roof replacement from the reserve funds?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a replacement to Mr., substitution to Mr. Holloman's amendment? So what we'll be voting on, I know it gets confusing, what we'll be voting on is an amendment to, well, a substitution to the amendment. The substitution is 2.8 million dollars for Aquarian roof replacement from reserve funds to replace what Mr. Holloman's amendment, which was to include 6.8 million on the bond. So-
Do you need that additional language?
Yeah. So what we're voting on now is not to put it on the bond, but to pay for the roof out of the reserve funds.
Just to substitute the language?
Yes, just to substitute the language.
And then we will have another vote on whether to amend the bond?
Right.
So I will vote to substitute the language, so there's no confusion on what's happening here, you'll see that.
But if you vote to substitute the language, then Mr. Holloman's amendment changes? Right, okay. Just want to make that clear. All right, are we ready to vote? Okay.
Let's make sure we get this right. So I'm adding the language that you just stated, correct?
Right, that it's a replacement. Katie and I have been brushing up on our parliamentary procedures. Is that correct, Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Okay. So, Ms. Hildy, would you like to read the-
So there's a substitution to Member Holloman's amendment to allocate 2.8 million dollars for the Aquarian roof replacement from reserve funds to replace Amendment One for Mr. Holloman to include 6.8 million for Aquarian capital improvements on the bond.
And realize that you're voting for the proposed bond along with this change?
We are only voting for a wording change to an amendment, a potential amendment to the bond.
Okay. Right. We're not voting for the full motion, yeah.
Then we will vote on whether to actually allocate the 2.8 million.
Okay, board members, please vote. So there are four nays and three yays. So that revised, revision does not pass.
Let me go back to Andy's original amendment. The original was Andy and Margot. You were the second, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So now we are going to vote on Mr. Holloman's amendment, correct?
Yes.
And his amendment is to add up to 6.8 million dollars for Aquarian capital improvements.
Ready to vote?
Are we ready to vote? Okay, board members, vote. Okay, please. We, we still have work to do here, guys. I, I understand your enthusiasm. So, that amendment passes, but I do have another amendment to the proposal that I'd like to make. And that amendment is, I'd like to remove inlet view from design. And the reason I'm doing that is because, pardon? Oh, right.
Well, no, actually, the main mo, well-
No, the main motion hasn't passed.
And these amendment passed, and now we're back with the main motion, of course. You're absolutely okay.
Right. So, okay, thank you. So, the reason I'm removing inlet view is because there's not a consensus in the neighborhood of what they want. And I don't want to get into a position where we're doing something that is not supported by the neighborhood. And so I'd like more information on that. I think we could actually add something else, but I won't do that at this time, that would be on our list. But because there's been conflicting information on inlet view from the community, I would like to remove that from the bond. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Bellamy?
So I guess I'm not ready to remove them, but I would move them to maybe year two or three. That gives the community and us time to engage. And, and, because it's split. The emails I've gotten regarding inlet view have been, "Put us on the bond, take us off the bond."
This is for the bond, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. So I'd like to amend-
We're not amending the CIP tonight.
Wait, we're not amending, okay.
We're talking about the bond, so we're not amending the CIP. What we're doing is amending the bond, and then we can, the CIP is a moving target.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Ms. Hildy.
Thank you, President Marceau. I, I would like to see inlet view stay on the bond. I regret us taking it off last year. I think that was a missed opportunity. We have very high deferred maintenance. One of the ways we address deferred maintenance is with renovating or rebuilding buildings, and it's dependent on each situation. We've had a lot of input on inlet view last year because it was supposed to be on the bond. We did put it as a recommendation, not just on the capital improvement plan, but on this bond discussion. So this is a, we've had a lot of input from the community and a lot of broad support for it. But the reality is, we have to start addressing our deferred maintenance. This is, it's a multi-pronged approach for it. This is the oldest building in the school district. Age alone is not a reason of, you know, somebody mentioned that, of course, but we've looked at the numbers for, I mean extensively last year, and that the replacement inlet view is a good investment. We've heard clear explanation on that they have more students zoning out than zoning in. So we know the demand is in the neighborhood. Their students in inlet view need, you know, it is time for this school to be addressed. I wish Abbott Loop had gotten on last year because now we're going to just be even longer, even longer, and all of these deferred maintenance continue to add up. And what does that mean when we don't address our deferred maintenance? It is a greater expense to the public. That is what it comes down to. If we had been more aggressive in addressing our deferred maintenance, you know, five, 10, 15 years ago, we wouldn't be in this position. So I'm not willing to wait more. That doesn't mean we don't have conversations about what do our capital planning look like. You know, we closed the school up this time last year, a wonderful school with wonderful parents, with wonderful programs. We've made really hard decisions, and we have to keep making those decisions. It is time to start investing in our infrastructure. Inlet view makes sense, and I, I'm ready to start moving forward.
Ms. Mitchell, then Mr. Donnelly.
I, I don't, I'm just gonna, I don't know where we're at. I think we're already at a replacement for an amendment. What I would like to see on here, I absolutely agree with Member Hildy. I, we can't kick the can down the road. That school is, that area is going to increase in population. The housing is turning over, and younger families are moving in. We have the Assembly passed a tax credit or a tax, I can't remember the term. They're, they're offering, we're going to see more development downtown because of the tax break that is being offered to encourage more downtown density of housing. The fact that inlet view is now an IB school, I think some of the families in the neighborhood who have been taking their children outside of that district are going to want to go there. They currently do not have enough space to have two classes per grade level, and if they got up to their capacity of 300 or 330, they would need that. I, I absolutely think we need to have us on the bond. What I, and I, I do agree with Member Hildy that I think that our depart, our, Mr. Roth's group has looked and has made the determination that replacement makes more sense than, than renovation. But, but I guess what I might offer up, depending on what happens with this amendment right now, is renewal slash replacement school design, so that we leave that open. Maybe we do need to have one more conversation with the community in terms of what that does look like long-term, but I absolutely do not want to take this off the bond. I'm really concerned that we are two-thirds of our total bond indebtedness now versus 10 years ago. We are falling behind in deferred maintenance. It, it's just not good for anybody.
Mr. Holloman.
You know, this, this is a conundrum in that we exist basically to be an avenue for public input. But when I look at issues like inlet view, like the, the reconstruction of greening, we've been on these conversations for a very long time, had meetings, and, and there are times when we conduct meetings in not the best way. So I'm not in any way going to claim we've run a perfect process on anything. But when we look at inlet view, it's come through our capital projects. It's been discussed with the community over a long period of time. If we reach this point on the, the day we have to decide about bonds, and suddenly an email campaign derails it, I'm not sure how we move forward in a rational manner on any number of things. We, we do have to be careful and go out and solicit the opinions of the community all along the way, well in advance of these critical times, which unfortunately, we can't put this off a couple of weeks. We can't put it off a month. We know what we've been planning to do for quite some time. We've announced it to the public. This hasn't been secret in any way. I think we need to keep it on there and make this process begin as well.
So if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make an amendment to my amendment, which I can do. I'd like to add airport, or not, I'd like to add Abbott Loop. If we're concerned about our schools and getting the most done, let's add Abbott Loop to the design.
Is that an amendment to remove?
Second.
Is that a second, a separate one?
That's a separate one to, instead of taking inlet view off, add Abbott Loop. Because Abbott Loop is also one of those that we have taken off. I've been on the CIP Committee for many years. That's another one that we've taken off of there over and over again. That's another one that has high needs. I went to their community council and heard repeatedly from them. So if we're concerned about not getting the things down we need to do, then let's do it.
Point of information, so are you withdrawing your original amendment?
I'm revising my original amendment to, okay, I'm, I'm withdrawing my, I don't think you can withdraw if it's been seconded.
Usually not.
The maker of that.
Oh, okay. Well, yes, so I withdraw my first amendment, and I have this amendment to replace it.
Okay, so amendment to the amendment.
Sorry, Katie.
I move to add Abbott Loop?
Yes. For design.
Is that replacement or renovation?
We can put replacement or, yeah, do the same. Do the replacement or rebuild, and look at it.
Should we ask Abbott?
Yeah.
Sure.
Madam President, I'd like to confer with Tom Roth and, on this issue, the amount or the, the work, the capacity, what, it looks like you have something to add.
Yeah, through, through the President, just, just on this one topic with regards to design or, or for replacement or renewal, you know, one, one of the things that we do need moving forward, if we're going to move this to bond council and then to the Assembly, it has to be specific. It's either for, for a replacement or for renewal as it moves forward in the, the approval process.
So what has been the recommendation?
For, for the recommendation that we had in the six-year plan, it was to replace both of those school buildings.
Okay. Then what I'd like to do is add Abbott Loop with inlet view for replacement design money.
So design right to the bonds, I'll see.
Point of information, do we have a dollar amount?
Do we have a dollar amount on that design?
Through the President, we, we do for, for year three, and, and it would have to be modified somewhat just because it would be moved forward. 4.536 million for the replacement design.
So is that-
So we'd be adding 4.
So it might, it might decrease by some amount just because of moving it forward.
Madam President, I'd like to follow up. What is the percentage of increase per year that is calculated into deed proposals? 3%?
3%.
So let's, if you could do the math, Mr. Anderson, take off 6% off of that number as we're moving it up two years.
So there'd be a dollar amount?
3.5.
So, I guess we'll do the same as-
Did he get you an answer?
So four in amount up to, four in amount up to, and then whatever he comes up with.
Just over 4.3 million.
So should I say 4.3?
Like taking it off? 4.3 after the 6% has been removed? Yes.
So what is the proposed cost of the design for Abbott Loop replacement?
Is 4.3.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, could you add that up for us if the bond is currently 73, 0, whatever? Can you add the 6.8 and the 4.3? Oh, do you have it?
Yes, it's currently 90 million, 843,000, from an original 79 million, 780,000.
Well, what I have on here is a proposal on ours is 76,000.
Oh, that, that's correct, because I kept inlet view in.
Okay. No, inlet view would stay in.
So was it, is it 90?
Ms. Hildy.
Just as a clarification, so the one we have before us includes inlet view at 76 million, and then we would be adding 6.8 for Aquarian, and then whatever the design for Abbott Loop would be.
Got it.
And to your point, Ms. Hildy, that is about the dollar amount if we don't bond for next year that we were looking at, I believe?
I mean, my goal has been that over year one and year two, we hold bonding flat. So whether we have 86 this year and 10 next year, or whatever the math works out to, that's, that's fine. That is going to be a hold even for taxpayers. That's something I'm comfortable with. If we're going to start tackling deferred maintenance, I think that's an excellent thing to start communicating. This is a big number. I don't want to present it as a multi-year bond. So how do, how do you say this to the community? I do know that some of this should come back as potentially FEMA reimbursement. That doesn't go back to taxpayers, though, but it would go toward deferred maintenance and keeping below whatever the, the bond is so that we're not raising property taxes.
Mr. Donnelly.
I think we have to be careful about assuming we're going to get FEMA reimbursement because the testimony we had of FEMA's requirements for insurance, earthquake insurance, possibly making it more expensive to acquire the FEMA reimbursement than it's going to cost us in the long run. So it's, that decision is going to have to be made at some point in time on a cost-benefit analysis. So I don't think it's a, it may not happen.
Ms. Hildy.
And I completely agree with Member Donnelly, and it might be functionally that there is nothing that gets reduced, but with this number, we can still hold property taxes even over year one, year two. Does it then turn it into a de facto multi-year bond if it ends up being zero? You know, I, I don't think you had 111 for your multi-year bond. So there is still some wiggle room for having 20 or 30 million of deferred maintenance next year, some of those security projects. You know, we start, we have to start having these bigger conversations and talking about the actual numbers, not just what we want things to be, if we could just start over again from scratch. So this is something we could work with.
Mr. Holloman.
So, on one hand, like, like I think all of us, I want to move ahead as quickly as we can on all of this, and yet we can only move forward at a certain speed. My problem now is if we add this in, we're saying to the public that we're going to be doing two major renovations on, on buildings that were damaged, as well as starting the process of building two new buildings to, to replace structures that we think are deficient, and, and we think our best interest is to replace them. Those things stay true, but I think there's a limit to how much the public will do at once. And, and I think this increases the bite. I, I think there's a reason that our committee only brought one building forward outside of the earthquake damage for us to do the planning on. We're asking a lot in an uncertain time, and it's going to be extremely uncertain until we see the, the governor's budget, and then it may be worse. I'm not sure. But I, I think a lot of citizens would have trouble pulling, pulling the trigger on essentially four renovations, four major renovations, two new buildings, two new major renovations, two earthquake damage. I, I would love to see them all happen, but I want to make sure that some of it does happen. And I would draw the line, I, I would leave inlet view in the bond as that package was developed over a long period of time. I would not support essentially adding the construction of another school to it. I realize the dollar amount's much smaller, and it's just the planning, but if we do that, we are saying we're going to be back pretty soon. But if we do that, we are saying we're going to be back pretty soon for the construction dollars. I don't think anyone can avoid seeing that. So I would not support adding an additional building at this time.
Any other conversation? So I would just say that I have heard this board say that, you know, we did pass a resolution that we weren't going to do anything new, that we're going to do just deferred maintenance, roof, that sort of things. But at some point in time, we have to say that we have to move forward as a district. And those are two schools that have actually been pushed off, I don't know how many times. And I understand your concerns, Mr. Holman. I have those concerns also. But I think we have to move forward and do what's right for our schools. And it's our job to support them and to be able to communicate to the public and community why this is needed, just like we will do with everything else that has been proposed on our bond. So there's no other comments. We'll take a vote. So that does not pass with four nays and three yays. Okay, so we have the main motion that we are now... Yes, Mr. Anderson?
I would move to amend the main motion by paragraph eight of my original substitute motion, which reads amend the language for Inlet View Elementary School project to replacement design, to remodel design and replace the project description with funding, design funding to remodel Inlet View Elementary School on existing site.
Sir, a second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Mr. Donnelly?
As it appears now, I share Member Holman's concern that this bond is going to collapse under its own weight. Building a new, entire new school. We're looking at committing to taxpayers, although they could just decide to abandon the investment they make in the design to a 30 to 40 million dollar project several years out. And that's just huge. And I'm afraid what's going to happen to the earthquake money. I'm afraid there's going to be significant... Well, I know. I've been told there would be significant opposition to this bond package if this is in here the way it reads now. And I don't want to lose these earthquake bonds. That's why I brought my original substitute motion, was to protect the earthquake bonds and give other things a decent shot at an up and down. This was the language I had proposed in my substitute amendment. And I'm just very concerned about losing the earthquake bonds.
Any other? Ms. Vekalas?
I don't know if the superintendent or maybe one of her staff can help answer the question that maybe I've missed in conversation over the last few weeks of either the why or the pros of why a replacement was chosen over, you know, a renovation, you know, up to, you know, standards that they need. Is there a cost benefit in doing it that way? Is there something with the building component that, you know, might favor one avenue or another? Just to help clarify why one way over the other.
Sure. Through the President to Member Vekalas, I'll have Tom Roth. The, just again, the question, Tom, I'm not sure if you caught it. The, can you review the reason that a remodel or a replacement was placed on there rather than a remodel in relating it back to the deed standards and articulation of how those items are determined using public monies?
Through the Board President to Dr. Bishop. So the administration brought forward last year a recommendation to replace Inlet View. And as the superintendent described, what we were recommending was a school that could accommodate up to 300 students based on the number of kids that live within that catchment area, that boundary. So one of the main contributing factors, and it's been discussed, it's one of the oldest schools in the district. It's got, you know, multiple needs and the thought being because of the student population, because of the age of the building and the education adequacy, as an example. It doesn't like have a gymnasium. It's got a kind of a common multi-purpose room area. The thought being that it would be better, and actually, this was also corroborated by Mr. Bingham, who was out to do his analysis last year, recommended that, you know, as he phrased it, this school is a scrape off. But that the program, the program is very successful. It's a very dynamic community. And then it was recommended at the time the board agreed in the last six-year plan that that would be the plan moving forward. Does that get after what you're asking, Dr. Bishop?
I was curious, is there a threshold to the cost of renovation and the longevity of the building outlook to just the cost of redoing? Like, I know that we did that for the earthquake.
Well, the thought with this building is you really don't, and you mentioned it, for one, you really don't have space on that plot to expand the building. You're really looking at building up. But that building, because it is 55 year, or 60-plus years old, it wasn't designed to build up in order to achieve that number, that target student or program capacity. It just lent to replacing that school.
Could it? That was the recommendation, may I, Madam President? There's, the proposal before us is that a renovation be done. We can't have both on there. Are either one viable moving into the future?
So through the President, I mean, it is certainly a feasible course of action to do a renewal of Inlet View, accepting the fact that, you know, at the end of it, you're going to have a school that is about the same size that can accommodate the population that it does.
And I think that brings us back to the long-term planning aspect of this. Doing a remodel of Inlet View versus a replacement does not plan wisely for the future of Inlet View. The existing demographic needs of that neighborhood. Right.
There's no other discussion. Is the board ready to vote? And we are voting on... I move to amend the language for Inlet View Elementary School project to replace replacement design with remodel design and replace project design with design funding to remodel Inlet View Elementary School on the existing site. Board members, please vote. That does not pass with five nays and two yays. Okay, so now we are voting on the... The main motion. Ms. Hildy.
I just want to clarify. So it's the as stated with greening Eagle River, all the earthquake projects, some planning design, Inlet View and 6.8 for Aquarian.
Correct.
Madam President, may we take a two-minute recess to get the exact finances set?
Yes, thank you. Five.
Actually, I have one more amendment.
Can we, let's do the five minutes and then...
Okay.
Because, yeah. If you want to get with Katie on that, Mr. Donnelly, if you want to get with Katie on your amendment.
Yeah.
Oh, number one on the second page.
Okay, I just... Dean and I just texted it to Katie.
6.8. He said 6.3, it's 6.8. It was 6.8, not 6.3. Round up, round down. It's only millions, right?
No. Why didn't she vote?
Yeah, I saw, well, actually, I saw this one.
I, you know, I saw that and I just... I found it. I mean, it was right there.
So this is our total.
See, when she voted no, that opened up the 6.8.
Well, is that part of the...
Yeah, I thought you said it.
Right. I don't think that's part of the recommendation. I don't care.
All this other stuff.
I don't care. I texted it. Bye.
Yes.
Okay, so 82.833. Thank you, Jim.
What's your clock on reimbursement?
Katie, you are a saint tonight.
You know, except the only thing is, I realized we... Oh, no, someone turned them on. Yeah, they turned them on. Oh, no, we didn't turn our lights on.
Oh, no, these we did.
We're trying to turn them on at the end of the meeting, so there's the house. Scott, you get a lot to watch tonight.
I gotta go back and watch it all and write a story. Thank you guys, happy while making everybody in form.
Oh, yeah, please. You just do you. You're doing great. Make sure they all know. One more minute. I know. I know.
Where have you guys been? Watch the news.
I mean, there's gotta be a break. There's a break in that. Us is the most likely to be active. We're not... It's hard, though, you know, because nobody knows until it's right at that moment.
But for everybody that reaches out and sends you guys a email that other people send back.
That's why I always try to take a note because how many parents have gone to school? I still have to think about this. Just because you put Jacob and you have children. I've never done it. I still don't think I want to do it. I still don't think I want to do it.
Yeah, here's one thing going right there.
That's the part I...
All the guys looking at you.
Yeah, that's the part like... So I always try to smile at people. You're still right.
How you doing? Do you need anything? Want me to get you something? Those people are freezing up here.
Oh, a cot.
Oh, a cot? Oh, yeah, I was thinking about that, too. I wonder how people feel about me going to the same outfit tomorrow, you know? Where did you get the chocolate?
In the room. It's in there.
I think I'm good. But if you see a sticker out there. Or I'm no good, like. So this is like a disclaimer on the whole body. And so, you know, just that, I see. How come we're like amending and substituting amendments and someone just going up or down and then it's right on the floor? Thank you.
Okay, calling all board members back, please. Let's, recess is over. Who are we missing? Dana? So, Mr. Donnelly, you were making an amendment to the main motion.
Yeah, on the separate page that I submitted, it's motion number one, this page. And it's, it reads, "With the exception of replacing funds used from district savings for earthquake-related expenses, all and any reimbursement from the federal government to the Anchorage School District for earthquake recovery capital projects funded by bonds authorized by this bond package shall be applied to reduce outstanding Anchorage School District bond debt." That would reduce the taxpayer property taxes.
Need a second first? We need a second first, yeah. Is there a second on this? Okay, hearing those.
I am going to second because I do want us to not have this out just unanswered.
Okay, so we have a second. Mr. Donnelly?
I appreciate that. So if the board passes the bond proposition as it stands now, we're going to be somewhere over $30 million more this year in new debt if it passed than we're retiring in debt. And if there's a possibility that FEMA does send us money, I think the fairest thing to do to our taxpayers is to use that to reduce some of that outstanding bond debt to minimize... is to use that to reduce some of that outstanding bond debt to minimize the effects on property taxes. Because I don't know about you all, but I'm paying a lot of property taxes, more than I ever paid, and I grew up here, I've lived here my entire life. And this is the package we have before us now. If there's not major reimbursement by FEMA and used to offset property taxes, it's going to increase property taxes. I mean, that's just it. I mean, because there's also no guarantee of what the board might do next year. I mean, there's no promise in here, as I had proposed with a two-year bond proposition, to not have a second-year bond. So, I think this is a very serious property tax issue, because property taxes are going to go up.
Ms. Hildy.
I shared Member Donnelly's concern, but I was under the impression that that's not possible to directly refund, or to pay down the outstanding debt with the extra FEMA. Like, there's a restriction on the FEMA money, so perhaps we could have some clarification on whether this is possible use of FEMA money.
Yes.
Madam President, I would like to ask Mr. Anderson to explain kind of all this issue and give us some insight, please, in regard to the statutory allowability.
Thank you. So, to clarify, if, if we spent twenty million dollars working on something and now FEMA reimburses us, we, we could use it for other projects that, when we talk about, could you use it to pay off bond debt? In reality, you can't pay a bond off early. It's not like a house loan where you can pay it off early because the investors intentionally bought into a twenty-year investment strategy option. So, if you had ten million dollars in FEMA money left over, you could choose to apply it toward a one-time, one-year reduction in taxes. And we do that by just not asking for taxes in that amount to the municipality. But, so the, the real options are, is that what you'd want to do, is lower taxes for all the Anchorage homeowners for just one calendar year? Or would you use that ten million dollars to not put the next ten million dollars worth of projects on any bond? And then you'd really be reducing long-term additional expenses to the, to the, to the voters. It'd really have to be a large amount of money for, for them to really feel like they got a huge, long-term gain if you reduce taxes by forty dollars for just one year, but then you still throw another bond out the next year. So, I think it's really just a strategy on, do you want to take credit for a one-year slight reduction in taxes? Or you actually just don't put new projects on a future bond, and you can use the FEMA money in that approach.
So, I'm going to say what my husband always says. He always talks about paying back this bond debt, and I never see my taxes go down. So, I mean, we talk about it, but I, I mean, really, there's other things that happen, and I, I don't think the average person sees that their taxes are going down when we talk about this, so... Yeah, your assessment goes up. I mean, there's other factors, but my husband says my taxes never go down.
And just to clarify, the school bond portion of your taxes have been, they're not rising, that's why we're in this deferred maintenance issue. If appraisals have gone up, that's beyond us, but the amount we've been asking for has not been increasing. That is why we are under, and we have reduced our bond indebtedness over the last fifteen years from, what was that, two hundred million, and now it's at six hundred, because we underbonded for what we were doing.
Mr. Donnelly?
I'd have to phone a friend here and ask Mr. Anderson if our actual effective debt has actually reduced since of the impact of the five-year moratorium on bond reimbursement.
Ye- yes, of course, because we're paying off the principal plus interest every year, so our actual total debt, because we're still at about, between forty-nine and fifty-three percent, was still being state debt reimbursed, with the exception of this one-time fifty percent cut this year. You know, I'm assuming right now, current law is that state bond debt for old bonds is still going to be covered next year until they change or, or another veto occurs. But at this point in time, we're still in the less than what we had the prior year, even with the fifty percent reduction this year in state debt assistance.
Ms. Hildy.
And I appreciate the clarification, Mr. Donnelly. I was thinking more of a historical perspective, just for the, you know, people have a lot of views on what their property taxes numbers are and what has been happening with school bonds, but certainly the lack of bond debt reimbursement and how it disproportionately affects municipality of Anchorage is significant.
Mr. Holman.
I think trying to say what we're going to do when we don't know what's going to happen potentially puts us in a bad place, having to walk back something or, or having to do something different. Absolutely, if we get significant reimbursement that we can use, especially if we can use it to avoid offering a bond package at all and still be able to address some deferred maintenance, or offer a very small package. I mean, these are all, all different things that we can put on the table. But we should do that at a time where we know the numbers, know, know where we're at, and, and be able to offer something substantial and know that we're not going to hurt ourselves by doing it.
So, any other board discussion? If not, I'm going to call the vote. And is everybody aware of what we're voting on? Okay. And that amendment to the bond or revision to a main motion does not pass with six nays and one yays. So, now we are back to the main motion, and if there are no other amendments, I would like, or discussion, I'd like, yes, Ms. Vekalas.
So, as it stands right now, and, so it's brought up in the superintendent's report about the process through Eagle River and Chugiak and Greening and all of that. As it stands right now, those projects are all on there, you know, as they are listed out. However, I believe it's been tentatively set for a December ninth town hall meeting for that community to have some of these discussions. Before we take a vote on this, I would like to make sure that I understand the process or the community understands the process, that what is going to happen, you know, from here forward, and that their voice at this town hall is not in vain, and it's not too late, and it's not whatever, so that, you know, a meaningful dialogue does actually happen and occur at that meeting. And so, we have this on here right now. What happens in December, if there is a material shift, then what? Is there the room to change it, or, you know, and, and who does that? How does that happen? I just want to make sure that that meeting, that town hall, has purpose, and it's not just another step in, you know, a frustration.
Yes.
Yeah.
Through the President to Member Vekalas, I'm going to ask for assistance, but my understanding, something very similar happened last year. It was just kind of a opposite, where the board passed a bond, and then in between the time that the board passed the bond and the assembly voted on it, an amendment was proposed at the assembly to add four million. The board, knowing that that was going to occur at that level, passed a resolution that said, yes, we, we support that four million to move forward. I don't believe, from my, speaking with George Vekalas, who has experience at the assembly as well as the school district, that it can be unilaterally changed by the assembly. So, if the recommendation came back from the town hall meeting that we want to put a halt on this, it would be brought, before the assembly moved forward, it would be brought back to the board to have some type of a resolution. But in the meantime, the preparations for bond council and the paperwork, which is a long process, that's why we're, this is in December before April, can begin, especially with some other things. So, I would appreciate some concurrence, or absolutely, Superintendent, you're wrong on this one, but we do want to make sure that that community meeting knows that there, that, that those discussions aren't in vain. So, I'm going to turn it over to, I have a thumbs up. It would take the board to do something else in a resolution to concur with that assembly understanding. Okay.
Is the board okay with what's on there? Do we want to specifically add? I think we want to add Aquarian on there as part of the...
It's, it's, so we have that little grid. So, the motion amended that, that bond package, right? So, this number, dollar number represents, reflects...
Right.
Like, just put that in the little grid, the Aquarian's explaining.
Madam President, I believe that Jim concurred with the number. I would like to double-check that this language would cover what the bond council needs through deed regulation to have the items defined, and that would be to Mr. Roth and Mr. Vekalas. Do we need any more clarity in this motion to move it forward?
Because the amendments are recorded, and it says as amended.
Right. And the individual amendments are recorded in regard to what we have already done. It would just be awful to have to come back to the table after this long evening.
Okay, is that, are you giving me warm fuzzies, or we're not ready yet?
So, so, what, what we're going to need to do, I, you know, I think, I think we can, we can work with the number, but what, what we received is, is a, is a document that was provided by the, the APC. So, I mean, in, in, to put it simply, we, we kind of need to put it into capital planning speak on what the specificity of the, the scope of work would be that can go forward. I think we can work with that. But, but, you know, where, where we could be challenged is that, you know, they, they, they have their cost estimates that have not been vetted by ours. So, the six point eight on their document may not correspond with, with the cost estimates that CPNC would use. If that's clear.
For the vote now, in order to...
Yes.
Move forward with having six point eight million on there, is this enough language to get the vote tonight? With the amendments that are captured? Because basically, it was a broad statement of safety, security, and one other thing.
Yeah, so, so, so through, through the President to, to respond to Dr. Bishop, yes, I mean, we, we will have to reconcile. I think, you know, what this could potentially do is if the amount is six point eight million that is approved by the board, based, based on our, our, our planning factors, we, we, we will plan to that...
That's understanding that the numbers might not mesh out.
The numbers might not mesh, so we may, we, you know, we, we could find that, that our estimates are higher and that we will be capped at six point eight.
We are wanting to read the amendment, specific language, to ensure that it can move forward with this language.
Yes.
The amendment was, I, from Mr. Holman, I moved to add up to six point eight million dollars for Aquarian capital improvements.
And at that time, when the scope of work and things are determined, there would need to be a decision if something came below it to add, because you have six point eight, or something above it? Is that correct?
Yes.
And was that the intent of the motion?
The intent was to allow up to that amount, realizing that the precise items done under that might vary.
Correct. Okay.
Changes like that.
That's perfect, that's clarity, then. That, that will work, the language will work for the bond.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Oh, no, Mr. Donnelly?
On the main motion before us, as amended, my calculations indicate that this package is now eighty-two million, eight hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, which is twenty-eight million, one hundred ninety-three thousand dollars beyond the projected 2020 debt retirement, and that's not adjusted for the increased impact of the debt for the lack of a, of a school debt retirement program in place. And there's no promise of any limit for what this board asks for next year, that we would take it, you know, there's no promise involved with this at all about limiting next year's bond request. My top priority's not on here, which is hardening our schools to defend our kids against external threats. And that doesn't even show up on the six-year plan now until two or three years from now, which I think's really concerning. And it has the taxpayers forced into a Hobson's choice, where they either vote for a brand-new school to be built, or at least investing millions of dollars into the design of a new school, or lose the earthquake funds. And I just don't think that's fair to the voters at all. That's why my original substitute motion allowed the voters to, to vote for, take care of the earthquake problems, and yet had everything in it that's on our priority list and would have addressed almost everything we've talked about tonight, and still maintained within the total bond debt that's going to be retired for the next two years. We're burning up more than half of next year's bond retirement debt with this single-year proposal. I, I think it's going to be a very difficult sell to the public.
At eleven. I have to agree with Mr. Donnelly. I do think it's going to be a hard sell for various reasons, and I do worry about our earthquake repairs. But at this point, we are either voting up or down on the motion before us. So, I'm going to ask board members to please vote. So, the bond proposal passes with one, two, three, four yays and three nays. Thank you, Board, for good discussions. My computer just went kapui. I think what we have next is non-agenda items. Is there anything the board wants to pull? Thank you. Thank you. Hearing no items to be pulled, we will move on to, uh, is there any RFIs that the board is proposing at this time? Okay. Any new business? Okay, no new business. Oh, oh, sorry.
Well, I'll just make it 30 seconds. We had that thing on Friday with Ms. Prowdy about that, their environmental plan. I just want us to use less paper. So we already have a boardless system, but, you know, I've printed out stuff or had stuff. Let's just try to use less pa, it costs a lot of money, be a little bit more discerning in what we're doing. Uh, do I need this, or can I look at my screen? It doesn't have to be 100% of time, but just requests.
I agree. We've already addressed the, uh, solar power, and that'll be a discussion next year. We have it on our agenda to look at. It's just, we've got too much going on, and so it'll be... Ms. Mitchell?
And this is sort of along those same lines. We have these wonderful mugs now, and, um, shipping water up to Alaska has, uses a lot of carbon, um, so I, I'd encourage us all to use our mugs. They're great.
I forget, sorry. Okay, anything else under new business? Any school board and administration comments? Oh, public testimony. Is there any public testimony? We do have to vote at 11 o'clock to extend, uh, the meeting, but if there's anyone that would like to testify, uh, please come forward. Okay, thank you. Now, is there any board comments or... Yes, Ms. Mitchell?
So I had planned to do a little bit of, um, information on the AASB annual meeting, which I thought was excellent. The, the Experience Board Academy was on family engagement, and there was a lot of information, and I also shared with you all the booklet on, um, student leaders, and that had, I went to a session on that. I will try to put that in writing, because I don't wanna keep us here any longer tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Is there a second? Okay. All right, we are adjourned.